Welcome all. The, I'm gonna ask that the Chair, or excuse me, the Vice Chair, elicit any public comments that we might have. Do we have any?
Yes, I have three people signed up. I'm just pop up. I'm gonna read our policy. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not a forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaint should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board and the public expects that we conduct in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, our first speaker is Dawn Russ. After Dawn Russ is Michelle Kramer. Dawn Russ. Michelle Kramer. After Michelle Kramer, Brady Chapman. What?
And her daughter.
Oh, yes. Babies in tow.
Well, I know we're just getting started and you guys haven't even started going over the information, but the reason I'm here today is for the rezoning. I live in the neighborhood of Greyhawk Landing, which is going to be hugely impacted by the rezoning, which in my earlier email, I'm realistic about, I understand, but I want to address my concern with the entire board. That, I'm sorry. I don't think it's right that there's a possibility that the kids are in there, that are there right now and can't stay. They should be able to be hardship in. I have children that have built memories in that school, and they should not be tossed away like a pawn. That's why I'm here today to address my concern as a parent for our children, not just my daughter, but all the children that live in Greyhawk Landing that were handed a letter two weeks ago, basically telling them that they were getting kicked out of their school. So that is my concern, and please take that into account when you guys go over the information today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chapman. I didn't have to read the rules for you. You're very talented.
Good afternoon, everybody. I too am from Greyhawk Landing, for those of you that may have forgotten. This will be the fourth time in the last six years that students in Greyhawk Landing have been rezoned. We understand that growth is happening. Two of the concerns this year are something I hope when you guys are debating this, you bring into effect. Number one, the members of the MAP Committee were told that current students would not be affected. You can ask the members of the MAP Committee, they were told this. The second piece is that we've got three schools out east that were also not included in the potential plans for Greyhawk. There's room at Willis, there's room at McNeil, there may not be room at Witt currently, but unless you're taking a look at all of six of the schools east of the interstate, there's no way to adequately address the growth going on in that area. Again, this will be the fourth, fourth time in the last six years that students in Greyhawk have been moved. Why are we the ones, Reverend Golden's not here, but he's the one that told us last week that we needed to share the pain? As I see it right now, Greyhawk is the only one that's feeling any pain. Now, I hope when you guys are debating this, we take a step back, take a look, reform the committees, bring all of the options out on the table, and let the chips fall where they may. If that still means that Greyhawk moves, I don't think you're gonna get that debate, but if you're going to limit the scope of the mapping committees, this was the only solution they could come up with. There was no other option because they weren't allowed to look at the other schools. That's it. Thanks.
And that concludes public comment.
Okay, the next thing is development of the attendance zones for irregular elementary and middle school. Mr. Sauer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The first comment that was made was that their students would not be able to finish at the school that they started with, and that is not part of our policy, part of our procedures. Our procedures state that any student that starts at a school, if there's a change, would be able to finish at that school. Okay? So, I don't know where that came from, I've heard many different rumors, but I've tried to tell everybody that has contacted my office that if your student started there, they'll get to finish. Now, I will say that the, any new student that would connect to a student that is there, a sibling, the sibling guarantee is no longer valid. Okay? If a school is over capacity, a school is over capacity. We'll never be able to get that school under capacity unless we stop the enrollment of outside of that district, districted area. So that has, that is a change. But if there's a fifth gr- or fourth grader there right now, that fourth grader will roll the fifth grade at Gullett, in this particular case with that student. This presentation is gonna touch a lot of different schools. In the same information that I'm giving you right now on that comment that was made is true for all schools. So any student that started at a school that is being affected by this will be able to finish with that. Okay? All right. Just a question for clarification on how we proceed. There's five different areas, there was three different committees, 15 total committees in all, plus some information on transportation that I have given you. Would you like all committees that agreed on the same map to come forward at the same time? Or do you wanna draw a Committee A, a Committee B, and a Committee C, even though they went?
It's a pleasure. All at the same time?
I would concur.
I, I think there's a general consensus that, you know, have them all up, so, all the comments about the same plan be voiced at once.
Okay, perfect, okay. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and get started. With what we do, I will do the introduction and the background of the information, and then each committee will come up and give their presentation. For just a recap of where we are with the, the meetings of the reorganization, we started in September and went down, we are now on November 8th for the workshop, and then after today, we'll do a 30-day public notice, and then on November 12th, we will have a public hearing and then a board vote with the recommendation. We started this process, if you remember, last spring, when we had the Transportation Department come in front of the board in a workshop, and the superintendent had asked the board to do a deep dive in anything that they could correct within their department, and they came back with our pockets that we are going to talk about today. At that time, there were four. It grew to a fifth when we looked at the map and we saw some things around Manatee Elementary, where we were crisscrossing some buses and things of that nature, where very close to Manatee L, they were being bussed to Bashaw, down at the bottom near Samasat, they were being bussed up to Manatee L. So we included them into the process. On August 13th, you voted that we may go ahead and start this process. We followed Policy 5120. We went to the sacks of the schools, we went to speak with the staff of the schools. It was there that the principal took charge of getting committee members. They are the ones who choose the committee members for these committees that we have and went. They chose three parents, they chose three staff members, and then one administrator. And we spread those out over all three committees, so that Committee A had partial representation from School A, had partial representation of School B, and partial representation of School C, and then we, that's how we made the three groups. So there was somebody from each school on each committee representing that school. Not everybody was into one committee. What do we look at when we go to rezone? We look at the capacities of the school, we look at the boundaries, the rivers, the roads, the distance to and from school, which was a big part of this, was the transportation. We looked at the socioeconomic composition that we have, and we looked at our all, our race neutral factors, and remember, those are socioeconomic status, our ESE are gifted and non-gifted, as well as our ELL population. So those all got figured in as non-race factors. The way that we have it broken down, and this is not the way that we will look at it today, but I, this is how I put it in Area 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, remember, there was five. We looked at the Palmetto area, the, the pockets that go to Stewart, Miller, and Stewart, Miller, and Palmisola, thank you. The Manatee area that involved Bashaw, Samasat, Freedom, and Gullett. We looked at the Daughtry area that involved Braden River Elementary, Tara and Daughtry. Then we looked at Maaca, the Faulkner Farms area that was between McNeil and Maaca Elementary, and then King Middle along with Braden River Middle. But the way that I'm gonna present, the first three that you will see, all agreed on the same thing. So there's no difference in the maps or anything. So you're gonna get Palmetto Elementary first, you'll get Maaca Elementary second, and then you'll get Maaca, I'm sorry, King Middle, third. And again, that's the way that your packet that I put together for you is lined up, so you'll be right in a row. Bus transportation, the same thing goes there for savings or outcome of transportation. It is in order that we will see the slides and the maps that will be presented for you. Okay, so with, with that, I'd like to, we wanna turn this around before the board members, because the audience can see the TV. If I could please have Jeremy Konazinski? Did I say that right? I butchered names. Joe Hoagland and Michelle Miller, please come forward. These were the captains of Committees A, B, and C. And the area, the audience can see up on the screen, the area that we're talking about is the, the area just east of Palmetto Elementary, where the word Palmetto is, you'll see the red polygon around Miller, you'll see a red polygon around the pink and Stewart, and you'll see a red polygon around the dark green in Palmisola. What you see on the board, which is a little bit harder to see for you guys, are our race neutral factors. Can you see? Oh, okay. Is, the first number is the total number of students in the polygon. The second number are those students that meet that race neutral factor, and then the third number is a percentage of the students of the race neutral factor into the total population. Example, Stewart, if you look under the word Stewart, there's 43 students in that polygon, there are 43 students that reach the non-race factor, so that's 100% of those students fit in that category. What you don't see, and what you will see when I give you the screen that shows the amount of movement, is many of these students are already attending Palmetto Elementary. Okay? At Miller, their number was 49, 49 out of 100. 30 of those students are already going to Palmetto Elementary. It's very close, it's easy for them to get there. Out of Stewart, 43 out of 43, 20 of them are already going to Palmetto Elementary. And then, I think it's 18 out of the next one, but I am, oh, it's on here on my sheet, and hopefully it's on yours, I have it written out on how many of those went, just underneath of the, the Palmetto area. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hoagland. You wanna go first?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders, thank you very much. This has been an actually very interesting process, never having done this before, and being at Stewart Northwest Bradenton, and knowing this zone, and kinda learning about why and how, and, you know, the whole process, and one of the things that we all kind of agreed on in every committee was, the distance is a huge thing. And when you have several schools that are closer, and for those of you that don't know where Stewart is, we're in Northwest Bradenton along with Palmisola, so one of the factors is obviously the time it takes for students to get there, transportation's also an issue. And then there's another thing that is important to us at Stewart and probably every school is culture. And a real challenge for some of these families is being able to make it for things like back-to-school night, report card conference nights, after-school activities, a lot of those things we do that really bring that school community together. So when we all looked at this, we figured, okay, transportation time, not only you have a half-mile-wide physical barrier and a school that is right down the road, so it seemed to make sense to us that Palmetto Elementary was the most logical choice, especially seeing as how there's already a pocket to the north of where ours is that are already Palmetto Elementary students. We already have roughly half of those living in that zone attending, and they already have infrastructure in terms of crossing guards and things like that in order to, in order to allow those students a walk to Palmetto Elementary.
Any questions, colleagues? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We agree.
Okay. Nice, nice speech.
If you look at your handout with the bus transportation, what I ask transportation to do is to send us what they currently are doing and servicing those students, and then what would happen to that area if this was rezoned. And so as you went down and go through this, what you're doing is you're taking roughly 100 to 110 students off of a bus for 37 to 40 minutes, every morning, every afternoon, that they would not have to do that. What that does for transportation is it saves them two buses, and it's, it's not like they're new, or that they'll just be shut down. They have looked at these to say that we will put those to other schools where we may be doubling back and picking up students in, in very congested areas. So what they're doing is just reallocating those resources of what you're gonna save when it comes to transportation. Remember, that was one of the things that was a big issue on why we wanted to do this, was through transportation. And so those two buses that currently leave Bradenton, go across the bridge in the morning, pick up those students, and then come back to Bradenton, they would stay in Bradenton and they would service those areas. Okay? Any questions on transportation?
Okay. Board Member Hope.
So with, with this particular change, did you say 137 students?
No, be roughly 100.
Okay, so about 100, 100 students, approximately 40 minutes in the morning and 40 minutes, so 80 minutes a day for 100 children.
Yes, sir.
And so that's around 8,000 child minutes a day?
Pretty quick math.
Times 181 days in the school, 180?
Yep.
And so that's, that's that number of child minutes that won't be spent on a bus, meaning time that they can spend with family, after-school activities, homework, recreation?
They will be zoned to not ride a bus, because they'll be close, but they can choice-
I get that.
-to another school, which they would ride a bus.
That's a lot, that's a lot of time that we will save children from spending time on a bus, which is probably not as productive as the classroom, or the ball field, or at home, or with family. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Hope. Vice Chair Messenger.
I have one question. I think you kind of just answered it, but the red circle, that's the two-mile radius around school.
Yeah, and again, that's a visual, because the, the two-mile radius for transportation is done by transportation, and it's, it's different than what you see, it's, that's at the school and it goes two miles everywhere. Well, it goes out in the water, there's nobody there, well, maybe, they can live on a boat. But transportation uses their program, and it goes from the door of the home to the school. So this is for a visual representation.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
One second, and we're gonna go ahead and put up the next slide, which would be the Can I release the team that went first? They're a lot of school personalities, they gotta get back to their school.
Okay, I think that's fine.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Okay, the next area that we are going to talk about, transportation brought to our attention last year, is the area there in the north of Faulkner Farms, and I do gotta tell you that there's a couple things there. Right now, we do not have all of the migrant children here. So the number that's represented on that spreadsheet or the slide that you're looking right now is what we had on September 16th. Okay? We expect that to grow to 80 to 85, I believe is what I got from McNeil. So what I did is, I gave it 90. So when you look at the spreadsheet, I accounted plus gave them a few more in case more absent, you know, came down with that group. So when we look at that, you're gonna see 53, 52, and 98. I based it 90/90 in the, the numbers, just because of what I was told by McNeil to represent all of that farm. Okay? Then you'll also see that up in the northern part of the screen, there's a little area that is off of 675, it has seven students, and then very down at the bottom, there's a very small piece that has six students. We included that, I talked to transportation, and they are here if you would like to ask them some questions. They suggested that we include that into the Maaca for safety reasons. The law states that we can have students cross a major road when the bus is stopped and the lights are on. Children can cross a road. Transportation would like it so that no kid, you know, crosses a major road. So they'll have a bus go north and south on 675 that will pick up from Maaca. They also have a north-south bus that will pick up from Gullett in that particular area. No kids now will cross State Road 675 if this is accepted. Okay? So with that, I'd like to, they're already here. Thank you. Why don't you come on up, and I'll let you guys introduce yourselves, 'cause I won't butcher your name.
My name is Dawn Schmidt, and I was on Committee B for this, and I am representing all of us, but I am a faculty member at McNeil Elementary School. We decided to divide this into your traditional pros and con list, and that's how we tackled the situation. A pro for the children that are already at McNeil going to Maaca Elementary, first of all, let me clarify the numbers. I just got very current data, as of five minutes ago. There are 91 students currently at McNeil that would be going to Maaca Elementary, and we are expecting about four more. So that's our current numbers right now. One of the pros for having this move be made is it would bring up enrollment at Maaca Elementary, and Maaca Elementary is under right now. We could possibly bring up the enrollment enough to get some allocations there that they desperately need. They have a volunteer, group of volunteers there that would give the children more one-on-one or two-on-one help than we can offer at McNeil. They would have less time on the bus, and the kids are familiar with the school because of summer camp. They want to, it's wanted by, this move is wanted by administration at Maaca Elementary, the staff at Maaca Elementary, and many parents. I do have something on the con list to address a few parents. It would be easier for the parents of these students to get to Maaca Elementary than it is for them to get to McNeil for events after school, during school, conferences, things like that. There is a bus currently going right by Faulkner Farms that would be able to pick these children up and take them to Maaca Elementary School. And 10 years ago, the children used to be at Maaca Elementary, and then they got moved to McNeil, so they would be going back home. Again, the pros are going to outweigh the cons, but one of the things I wanted to say personally, is as a staff member and a teacher, who I work with these children every day, my one concern, my main concern, was that they would be welcome at Maaca Elementary by all that's involved, and I feel 100% confident that they would be, because we've invested a lot of time in these children, we love these children. I actually had to leave my little group of these children today to come here to this meeting, and they're very special to all of us at, at McNeil Elementary. The cons would be, the first one I just mentioned, the teachers at McNeil are emotionally attached, but the teachers from Maaca feel the same way, and that puts us at ease. There was a meeting, I guess of some parents, about 14 or so, that they were concerned at Faulkner Farms, that they were gonna get pingponged, like they're gonna get moved, they were moved 10 years ago, they're gonna get moved back to Faulkner Farms, would they be moved again? So I just wanted to bring that all, up to all of you, so we could maybe have some discussion. And then, maybe Mr. Sauer could address and elaborate on that meeting that, that took place. Our committee as a whole had no objection, we were 100% agreed, it was unanimous. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay, and then I wanted to add, I'm Sarah Clark, and I am from Maaca. I was at McNeil also. I've been everywhere. But we do want these kids back. At McNeil, I worked with them, because that was just five years ago, and Faulkner Farms, those parents really cared about the education, so it would be great to bring them back. Those kids, after doing summer camp this year at our school, feel at ease because they know where they're going, and quite a bit about the school. We also can offer them the same quality education, since we have been an A school for two years in a row. So they're coming from an A school into an A school, and I think that's a big selling point, too. They're not going to be left out. So we're excited to get them at our school. They're coming, and we've got open arms, we've got a lot of great things going on at our school, so we do want them back.
Hi, my name is Martha Fera, I'm a staff member at McNeil Elementary, I represent Team A, and we also agreed that this would be the best move for them. We are happy and thrilled that the principal at Maaca, Carol Ricks, worked at McNeil as an assistant principal, and she knows these students. So we are just sending them back to someone that knows, and staff members, I've worked with Sarah as well. I think it's, and our, our team decided it's the best thing, because these students are on the bus all day, waiting in the morning, they come in, and then they're waiting so late, they get home so late, and it's, it's just heartbreaking to see them sitting there and waiting for the buses to arrive. I think that's the main thing, and for the parents to be able to share, like she said, with, you know, school activities, I think it would be the best thing. So we all agree, yes, the same.
Mr. Chairman.
Questions? Board, Board Member Hope, and then Board Member Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Clark, were you at Maiake or McNeil ten years ago when the, when the changes happened last time?
I was actually a win.
You were a win.
I was.
You were. Okay, so both of you, and I'm just curious if you could talk to us and the community about why were the changes made ten years ago? Because none of us were here ten years ago. So I'd like to hear from you.
Guessing the ten years ago was basically because of the ratio of, like Mr. Sauer said, the minority. Because McNeil Elementary, when we opened, it was, we didn't have many minorities there. So ten years ago, that's the reason that was made. Now it's different. It's, you know, it's, it's, yes, that's.
I believe they feel like it can be through choice. They'll be able to make sure that, that there's diversity.
Right.
Mr. Martha, if I could follow up that.
Sure, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. And I, that's what I kind of assumed the answer was, but I wanted to check with you all who had actually been there. Because that, that to me, big, big picture of this whole redistricting is that in the past, we tended to move minority students to predominantly white schools for the sake of diversification. But we stuck them on buses for an hour a day or an hour and a half a day to their detriment. So the, the way I see this is we're, we're, we're kind of, we're, we're looking at solutions in favor of keeping students at their closest geographical school regardless of diversity factor, racial diversity. And as you both mentioned, like the demographics of the county is completely different now than it was ten years ago, so. But I just want to hear from you all, so I appreciate that.
Okay, good point. Board Member Kennedy, was there anybody else? Okay, Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, to, to hear from the three of you and then I'm gonna get to a teachable moment. How did you feel about this opportunity to, to really affect policy change?
I'm glad you asked. I was just sitting down next to my principal, Principal McGrew, and saying, I have really enjoyed this process. And I've never been asked to do something like this before, but I feel like this opportunity has broadened my understanding of what goes on downtown. And I feel that, I feel quite honored, honestly, to be standing here in front of all of you today discussing these things that affect the county and what's going on. So thank you for asking.
I volunteered for this and just because I have, I'm Hispanic. I was, when these students came to us, it was more of a personal thing that I got that I wanted to help them. And now we're making a decision to let them go, but I trust and I know that they're ready and they're going to go with, you know, great staffing and a good, so I want to be part of it because I was part of it when they came. So I want to be part of when they leave.
Okay, and then quite a few years ago, I was on a committee when they did some moving around for Hale Middle School in Lincoln. And I was involved on that committee and I learned a lot. So when this came up and I had, I'd been at McNeil and I was at Maiake. I wanted to get in there and be able to put in my, my thoughts. Okay?
So, so the, the reason for asking the question, the, the board, we, the board had a, a workshop in our master training. And, and, and I threw out something called shared governance. And it's not often that you have good examples to be able to explain to people what shared governance is. But that's what this is. This is realizing that, that we have staff and we have administration who are closer to our students than we are. And that, given the empowerment and provided the tools, can help drive policy far better than we can alone up here. This transportation has been a personal issue for me because it, it, it just breaks my heart that these children, especially these young children, are spending so much time on a bus. But I just want my colleagues to know that this is really what shared governance is all about. It, it's about the board that's charged with governance empowering with the superintendent and her staff and, and those people that are in the classrooms, that are in the cafeterias, that are driving buses to be engaged and, and, and help make better policy than we can make in a silo. And this is a perfect example. You reached out to your colleagues. You're like, oh my gosh, we're gonna send our babies back to Maiake. But through this process you engaged, they participated, gave you the comfort level that these things that we were worried about, we know our colleagues, we sense their passion and we know these children are gonna be cared for and they're gonna get a great education and they're not gonna be spending half of their day on a bus. And so I want to thank you. And I, I, I suspect that the superintendent will continue this process because as this is demonstrating both to us and I believe to the public, that this is a method to make the best policy that we can and maintain that focus on the, the, the children, the, the students. So thank you again. Great job. Appreciate it.
For letting us be part of this process. This is great that you're letting us.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, thank you all. Thank you, Board Member Hope, for expressing our feelings about this. And Mr. Sauer, welcome back.
Thank you. With transportation, i- if you'll look at your sheet here, you can see currently that they have two buses that serve the Faulkner Farms. One bus that serves State Road sixty-four east and Wachula Road out there. With this change, if it's approved later, you are gonna look at the Transportation Department taking one bus from the McNeil area and adding. I will tell you that I went out and I spoke to the parents at Faulkner Farm with our migrant liaison, Mr. Medina, who translated for me. And I will tell you that there is concern with those parents, just as they brought it up here about being bounced around. I did explain that it is over ten years ago that we've done, that we have moved students from one school to another. We should probably look at our zones every ten years and see if there are needs for change. But their biggest concern was, please have transportation account for us even though we're not here in August. That we will be here in October, in November, and we'd like to have a bus and not have to be doubled back and picked up. So transportation has provided that and has two buses ready to go for those students out there. And with this move, you have a savings of one bus in that. So you're at a running total of three that not, that you don't need anymore, but you're gonna repurpose in, in your routes for efficiency. So that's where we are with Maiake. The third one, and then the last one that there was unanimous consent, was the area of King Middle and Brayden River Middle. So if I could have the captains of these groups, please come up.
All right, good afternoon. I'm Kristin Kryling, Principal at King Middle School. I want to thank you for your time today. But most importantly, at the end of the day, we want to look at the full picture. Also up here, we have, we were unanimous. It was very difficult for us because it became very personal for the people at Brayden River and for the people at King. But at the end of the day, we wanted to make sure we were doing the best for our students. And Mr. Sauer does have articulations in here as far as how much time on the buses. But if you guys have been to either East County or West County when our snowbirds are down, that math changes a little bit and the kids are with us a little longer. I do want to personally thank Doug Wagner and transportation because even this year, transportation has helped us immensely at the middle school level. So as far as that collaboration you're looking for, we're getting a lot of that right now. So we do want to thank you. It's still not wonderful, but we love the, the change. All right? So overall, we did have a couple areas that we wanted to look at. Right now, as far as growth, if you know, East County, out behind the Walmart and where, is it Texas Roadhouse out there? Tex, there's a subdivision out there and the concern was at first of how many people are moving into that subdivision and how will that ultimately affect Brayden River Middle School? Another question that we had in regards to Brayden River Middle School was in regards to another subdivision. It's right over here by Mixon's and it's a housing development. And with that housing development, we actually had the projections by Mr. Sauer. And the housing development right now over by Mixon, they're projecting twenty-four middle school students. That's the projection right now. As far as the apartment complex, the Magnolia Estates and Villas, they're projecting nine middle school students. Because right now out east, this, the growth right around Brayden River is not as much. At the end of the day, when we looked at it, we are now presently transporting students from seventy in Lockwood Ridge all the way to West County. And with that, it's over a seventeen-mile drive. So at the end of the day, like I said, it did become very discouraging to both of us, but we both knew what we were looking at. The one question, another question that was brought up by Brayden River, they are going through renovations. So their concern was truly how this would affect them, especially with the size of their cafeteria. With their service and the children and they're trying to provide the meals. That is one of our most important features as far as getting them, safely educating them. And their question was, is what the timeline looks like for them next year? Otherwise, they're with open arms as well to service these children because they're all our children. More? Jean Frieda?
Hi, everybody. I'm Kristi Jean Frieda. I am one of the parents of a student at Brayden River Middle. And I was elected, I guess selected, to be a captain for, for today. But exactly kind of expressing Kristin's sentiments, we are more than happy to have these students. We feel that's what's best for them. Spending two hours on a bus, I have a senior in high school and an eighth grader of my own. I can't imagine them being on a bus an hour in the morning and then an hour again in the afternoon. Especially if they want to participate in extracurricular activities or other events, getting their homework done and things like that. If they're not getting home until about six o'clock in the evening, that's a big concern. Also, you know, we want to welcome them, but we also wanted the board to take into consideration the renovations. Maybe, you know, getting some allocations back to the school as far as teaching units go, especially with the construction and possible portables that have to be used now with the construction. They're not sure what classrooms will be vacated due to that construction. So they were concerned about that. But also, you know, we also, ultimately, we just want to do what's in the best interest of our students. And we feel that allowing them to come and welcoming them with open arms is the best way to go because we do feel it's best for students regardless of the, of the renovations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Jessica Kane. I'm the assistant principal for King and I was also chosen. So we, we all expressed the same concerns. Towards the end of our meeting, the only other concern we brought up was why are Sugg and Lee not being considered? But we were told that that's gonna be something that'll be on next year's agenda as far as rezoning everyone else and the enrollment. We want what's best for the kids. It is hard to build a culture when you have parents that have to decide if they're paying their electric bill, how they're gonna get to us and we are far from where they are. So that is a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay, Board, Board Member Golden.
Not quite so sure. What is the recommendation with respect to the pocket of children that are in that sub, the new subdivision there by Johnson Middle School?
The Johnson.
By Mixon.
So he's talking about that subdivision. We talked about the name of it because we brought that up.
Evergreen?
Yes.
That Evergreen subdivision, for everybody that is looking on the screen, if you see on the polygon circles, Area Five, the line that goes down and it's on one fifty-nine, the Evergreen subdivision that they're speaking of is right above the number ten, or one oh seven, I'm sorry. It is the, the road that is there and there's no children there. It is being built right now. The roads are there, no houses. They're developing it as we speak.
The subdivision I'm talking about is right next door to Johnson Middle School.
That is, and I don't know where, I don't know the name of that.
It's the corner of Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, yeah, that is across the street.
Twenty-sixth Avenue South.
Yes, yes.
I want to know where those children who live right next door to Johnson.
Those children.
Are being recommended to be.
Go to Hale, I believe. That would be right here, this area right here. The, just for everybody that is looking on the screen, if you look above the top left corner of the polygon that, that we're looking at today, he's asking where another subdivision goes to school. That subdivision there is on Twenty-sixth Street. By the blue dot that's sitting up there, that is Johnson Middle School. Johnson Middle School is a K-eight school with, where it took on Wakeland as, as an IB school. So that is not a traditional middle school. It is by open choice. They have to pick their students that go there for the IB program. Those students that live in that area are the dark tan. They go out to Hale Middle School.
So that's a pocket.
That, that is a pocket.
That we're creating.
Yep. That, that pocket's been there for a long time.
But non, what's your call, non?
Non-race factors.
Non-race factors.
Yep. We are, in talking with the superintendent, as you can see, those that are looking on the screen, is we still have some outlining areas. We are, I've been told that we're gonna be rebuilding Sugg Middle here real soon. We, I was also told that down the road in the next year or two, there may be an expansion of Hale. There may be an expansion of Brayden River. What you will notice is that we have no middle schools in this central area. So all of your middle schools are out east or all of your middle schools are out west. So for us to be able to rezone this pocket here, I need maximum capacity at all of these schools. Right now Hale, and we just rezoned Hale with Mona Jane. We got them at capacity right now. We can't, unless you put in more pe, you know, more portables and more students than what it's built for, we're at capacity here. We did free up some room at Brayden River when we created Mona Jane. That allows this pocket to be able to go there. We'll be within probably fifty to seventy-five students of their capacity. When Sugg gets done, Sugg is built for eight-hundred-and-eighty-three students. When Sugg gets done, they will be built for about eleven-hundred. So now we can start to go. King is at twelve-hundred. Brayden River is at nine-hundred. If they get a, a pocket, we can get them up to eleven, a thousand fifty to eleven. Now I can take and we can divide this area equally amongst all schools. Maybe we can do something with this pocket of Mona Jane.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Chair. Board Member Golden.
It just seems as if we're trading one set of pockets for another set of pockets. And I'm concerned that what we are leading ourselves into is that the central part of the county is going to be called upon to fill the other new schools and newer schools that we're going to build without any particular consideration for the fact that we, as you said yourself, we don't have a middle school in the central part of the county. But for the fact that the middle school that we have there is a choice school, an IB school, which we support. That's, I'm, I'm just hoping that better minds in mind can come up with a solution that does not involve those twenty-four children in that subdivision that's right next door to Johnson, not being able to go there only because Johnson is an IB K-through-eight school and there are no other middle schools that they can go to other than choosing to go to Hale or choosing to go to some other, I don't know.
That's what brought up in every committee, when I got the notes and put the notes in the folder, every one of them suggested, why can't they go to Johnson?
And I, and, and that's.
Because when we got the original, this polygon right here, the red polygon that you see up there on the screen, the one fifty-nine, one oh seven, that was one of the first questions all of us asked because, and they said, focus on the polygon right now.
I don't have the school to put, you know, in their neighborhood.
I understand.
Any questions? Board Member Kennedy.
As long as we're on this topic and I.
Are you about to say Horizons?
No, I was not. Although Horizons is right there, too.
It's just up the street.
That was the Wakeland comment.
Yeah, and the Wakeland, yeah.
I, I, I kind of agree with where Reverend Golden's going here. Is there capacity at Johnson right now? There is room.
Oh, no, no. It's at capacity. They have a little, yeah, the middle school is, yeah. But there are things that you can do. It could be that. It could be that we send invitations, because it is an application process. It could be that we reach out to those parents to see if they want to go there. Um to help encourage and to let them know that possibility for next year.
Did you see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, board member Golden, go ahead.
It it just, it's like a, it's a moving target here. We're trying to achieve, I hope, equity. And I'm really glad to hear, I think, one of the reports that came out, well, they're going from one A school to another A school. That's great. And they don't have to ride a bus, and they don't have, I hear all of the good things. But but the greatness is measured by what we do for the least of these. And what I'm hearing you tell me is that that we've got twenty-four kids here that we have a problem with, that we don't have a solution for. And so what we're going to do is just pretend like it's not going to come up. It is going to come up again, just like these are coming up now. I I heard Mr. Kennedy, I like what he was saying. We are here today because of a nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, nineteen seventy solution to a problem that doesn't beset us anymore. All of our children now are being deprived of a quality education because of the policies that emanate out of Tallahassee. That that's just it. I'll say it, and it's all right for me to say it, nobody else will. But the problem is that we are trying to solve twenty-first century problems with twentieth century solutions. And you have to admit, we did this because we were trying to achieve racial parity in schools. Not equity, but parity. And 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 I I just see this, a whole nother neighborhood. I I was on the Bradenton City Council when we platted that subdivision. And the bottom fell out of the economy, so nothing was built over there for about ten, twelve years. Now they're booming over there, and the first thing that they're being told is, your kids are going to get on a bus to go out to Hale. That's not right. That's not right, and I I wish that, I appreciate all of the work that you all have done to come up with unanimity. But the pushback is, how do we overcome this kind of unfairness in a race-neutral way? That's that's.
Uh board member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I think what's important to note, and and I think it was mentioned earlier, that that with, I guess, the imminent replacement of SUG, we're going to increase capacity at SUG. Um I I like the superintendent's comments, and maybe even go further to have a uh a priority choice status for the students that are right there, you know, next to to Johnson. Uh that we we both, you know, proactively reach out to them, but then we place them on a priority list that that they they receive priority when choice opens up uh to be able to go to the school that's that's closest to or the school where uh the parents feel they're the best fit. And so that that's probably a pretty good solution, you know, for the next next year or so, is to to treat them um with with, you know, a priority, a preference uh to uh to meet those needs. Because they are kind of like in the middle, and and for my colleagues, I mean, we're addressing problems that are the result of those before us who didn't necessarily put schools in the right place at the time they chose, nor for the future, especially with regards to our middle schools. So thank you.
Okay, uh board member Golden.
You know, thank you, uh Dr. Hope, for your for your candor, and you are absolutely correct. What we don't want to do more than repeat the mistakes of the past is make mistakes now that some other board will have to live with, like we're having to live with the ones that are in our past. I'm just hopeful that as we speak today about the urgency of SUG's being redone and the commitment to make it, because it's an inner city central core or school that could solve a lot of these problems. I'm just hoping that our priorities won't shift in terms of the growth that we also know is coming out east. Because I've I've lived long enough to see the library that I thought would be on Manatee Avenue and Eighteenth Street East never came to be. But now we've got a new library coming up out in Lakewood Ranch, and God bless that, that's great. But at some point, some point, we got to move from parity to equity. Got to do that, and I'm I'm just, I'm hoping as we continue to 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 have these discussions that SUG will keep bubbling up uh to the top. I got some other things that I want to bubble up to the top, they haven't come up yet. That's just the first.
Well, they're coming.
Well, yeah, yeah, because I, we we haven't gotten to uh to Gullett and my granddaughters yet, but we'll get there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh board member Golden, and none of us are going to call you bubbles. The uh.
Let me.
I I, okay, I'm sorry, the, I couldn't resist that. What, um you know, I I brought up, you know, Horizons and Wakeland up the street, you know, from where we're having this new pocket. And we have the land, and the idea that we're going to be busing students out to Hale, or I don't know, maybe out to SUG, you know, when we uh add add to SUG, uh this gets back to, you know, more bus time, which we're trying to fight and try to eliminate. And we don't have any, in the central core, you know, middle school. Um we we have this, you know, wonderful community school going in, um not too far. And uh but uh I don't know the number of blocks from um twenty-seven to, well, it's twenty-seven to Manatee. That's twenty-seven blocks and another five blocks, it's about forty blocks, uh you know, to get to Manatee E. Am I about right with that?
It goes to, I think, six, so you're twenty-one, twenty blocks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and um and that is going to be a big draw, this community school, I believe. But, you know, it it's uh still a bus ride, I think, from this this uh square, whatever we nice, we call it. Uh and we're trying to get off the bu- uh get off the buses.
In this particular case of what we are right now, um as we are right now, you have students that are going seventeen, eighteen miles from here to King Middle. From the polygon that you see there to the top left-hand corner that you see up on the screen where King is. From here to the middle of, and I'm sorry, it's right here, it's around the the board here, but on your map down in the lower right-hand, it is seven point six miles. Students are on the bus for forty minutes in the morning and in the afternoon to come home. So forty-four, hour and twenty minutes being on a bus. Here, if you move this pocket from where it is right now, and you gave that to um Brayden River Elementary, they're going to be on a bus for twenty-seven minutes. So you're roughly saving five hours, a little over five hours a week of sitting on a bus. Hour a day is what it comes to, just a little over an hour a day, um by by moving that. But again, that is with what we have right now.
Okay. I I think everybody agrees, you know, this is a vast improvement, but uh board member Kennedy.
Thank you. It is a vast improvement, but we still have a long way to go, clearly. Um and I just want to, as long as we're on this discussion, throw a couple of ideas out. Um I'm looking at the yellow, the yellow group in East Bradenton. Um Mr. Minor already touched on this, but we have a community partnerships school coming in, so what if we made Manatee L a K-through-eight? So some of that group, I know this is a a year or two down the road. I'm just brainstorming here some ideas, because we have a central, we have a central Bradenton issue, clearly. And um, you know, is there capacity at Harley at all, or is it pretty, I know it's kind of a catch-all.
It's a bunch of different programs, so I'm not sure what it's sitting at right now.
Gotcha, okay.
I like that idea.
Somewhere in central.
I don't know about the capacity could be at Manatee L, of what they can add to that. Then you are losing a little bit of capacity there for your community clinic and, so we're going to take some classroom space away from that school.
Yeah, I think, I think they're about three hundred under right now, but it doesn't take into account the medical clinic and.
And there's a, and they're part of the next conversation.
True, yeah, true. So we're getting some back from that one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll hold my fire.
Okay, I I personally like that idea, maybe we can condemn some property or something like that. Yes, board member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you could point, show me where the old Wakeland campus is related to Johnson Wakeland. It's pretty close to the problem area we're addressing, the old, the other Wakeland Elementary.
Just just up twenty-seven.
Would be, I believe, right down here, off of Twenty-seventh Street.
So so that real, that real estate, forget about the building, because it's an elementary school building, but that real estate is kind of in this troubled corridor for middle school, correct?
Yes.
Like, maybe right in the middle of the troubled corridor?
Uh, something close, very close.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Allies, okay, um thank you all very, very much. It's uh, this helps the district a great deal. I'm I'm sure that the kids that are going to have reduced bus riding are going to be very, very grateful to you. And um so I think on behalf of everybody, thank you very much for being part of this. Okay.
Okay, I've already um gone over the transportation for this area, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Our next, the last um area is area th- um three to me. Um it is the Manatee area to you. So let me go ahead and. On this one, we had two committees that um found the same um solution. So if I could have committee A and committee C. Uh as you're looking at this, the areas that we looked at are Manatee Elementary. And if you see on your map, there's a a pocket of yellow right under the word Manatee. That is a zone for Freedom Elementary. If you look under the A N of Manatee down a little bit, you'll see a pink area. That is a zone of Basha. Then if you go to the right, you can see where Basha actually is. You can see that this light green next to the word of Basha is Manatee Elementary Zone. So you see that you have students from Basha crossing um Manatee. You have the Manatee area going back up north. You have the Freedom Zone that's in the yellow, and then you have the Gullett Zone in the dark green. Don't confuse, and we just ran out of crayons in our coloring apparatus, is that the Sammaset color is the same color as the Gullett. So as you're looking here, this color and this color are two different schools. If you're looking up on your screen, you can see Gullett to the far right, you see Sammaset to the far left. They, the colors are the same, two different schools. You'll see two pockets, and this is how Gullett became part of the equation here. Is west of the interstate, you'll see a green pocket right next to the word Freedom. That is Gullett. If you come across the pink of Basha, you'll run right into another green pocket. That is Gullett, not Sammaset, okay?
You mean this one right here?
Yeah, that one right there.
That one's Gullett.
That one's Gullett as well. So you have two large pockets west of the interstate that we transport east of the interstate. Um so with that, I got two, my, oh yeah, because this is A and C, okay. So I will go ahead and turn it over to our committee.
A, correct.
Yeah, it's A and C.
Uh, yeah, A and C are together. Oh, A and C. Yeah. Are you C?
Yes, I'm C.
All right. So we came up with the same line?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Nice.
So uh basically, the process that we went through as well, you know, similar to everyone else, and we were looking at um freeing up as many buses as possible, not that one, this one right here. Okay, so we um, we basically shifted areas here to Manatee. Um to start, to begin to fill that up, to then free up other zones, other pockets uh that may have belonged to like Basha and uh Gullett or not. And then uh Basha ended up taking some of the pockets here. Uh eventually, one of the things that uh was coming up was Gullett and their capacity and uh I think anticipated construction or things there that are going to add. I don't know, I heard like over four, about four hundred students by the ballpark. There it was a wild.
Down the right.
Yeah, okay. Um and they're already at capacity, so trying to free some of that up and um so that's where um Greyhawk also came into to play, uh they were right next to Freedom. And you want to move that there, and um so I think that's what happened. Overall, what we looked at, some of the things that uh we saw in changes as far as the demographics, because that's uh important as well. Um first, in terms of uh capacity with the numbers that um we had, uh Manatee was was uh going to go over by, I think it was like two and total, like a dozen students or so.
Seventy some students.
Fifteen total students.
Fifteen, fifteen total students. After adjustment, right?
Yeah.
And then um the uh percentage of uh lower socioeconomic status was, I think, a change of two percent uh overall. Uh Basha's change also was four percent, uh of like a four percent change in lower socioeconomic status. And um we're way under, Basha's way under, and uh this would have uh brought us closer to uh filling up the school. I think we'd still be.
Under by sixty-six.
Uh Freedom would still be under by sixty-four, and it would reduce, uh, oh, Sammaset would also end up over by, I think it was Sammaset, actually, it was going to be over by fifteen, and Manatee by thirteen. And then um Gullett were bringing those numbers down by two hundred thirty-three. Yeah. Uh Gullett was sitting at the table uh in in terms of like bringing those numbers down, because there was more students uh coming in. The, I think, um just worth pointing out, even though the lower socioeconomic status wasn't changing for many of the schools for Freedom, it was uh changing with with this. It was um, they're they were losing about thirty-one percent of their, is that, did I read that?
That is correct, that is correct.
Thirty-one percent, that's, so that that is a significant change in lower socioeconomic status. Where the ones with two percent, four percent, one way or the other, that that happened year to year uh within an elementary school. Uh so that that's a factor to uh consider. I think that's all I have. Did you have anything else?
Uh, yeah, what I would like to add um is the pockets that we took from Freedom and Basha and added to Manatee uh made the most sense, because the Manatee school is right there from a bus, from a busing perspective. Um so that really was a snowball effect, it created a snowball effect, because the pocket for Freedom that um was now at Manatee, according to this model, was about two hundred and forty students, which were taken away from Freedom. And so looking at that, it made a lot of sense tend to uh include Greyhawk Landing and bring that to Freedom, uh because we took a lot of students out of Freedom. Now, I would like to address the concerns of the gentleman at who's uh who spoke earlier and was very passionate about Greyhawk Landing staying at Gullett, which I completely understand. And we had some committee members that were very concerned as well. But with now Gullett being under so much, there is a lot of room for choice. Um I think right now the current model is like there are about two hundred students under. So that allows for um the Greyhawk Landing community to choice back into Gullett if they choose to do so. So the room and I'm for Gullett is there, but we are also taking into account the growth um that is coming east. So it leaves room for Gullett um for the growth as well. So that's really how how that all came together, because we started with Manatee, that made the most sense as far as the busing, and then it just kind of was a snowball effect to see how could we balance out the other schools.
Right, the, and I would just add that, in information that uh Mr. Sauer shared here, uh the committees were informed that any students that are current students in these schools would be able to remain there, they would. They would have to provide their own transportation, that they would be able to remain there, uh, for the entire time. And siblings would not, and you explained that whole, uh, that whole piece. So that was something where, um, we did look at in terms of, you know, having a fourth grader or a fifth grader still be able to finish out, yeah, that's cool.
Mr. Minder?
Yes, sir, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, I just wanna, Mr. Sauer, you did mention this earlier, I just wanna be really clear. The, the students who can continue to attend Gullet, was, was that? I thought what you said earlier was a fourth and fifth grader could stay?
No, 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 no.
Oh, any age?
K to five.
Okay, that's why I asked.
I gave it like a, yeah, any K to five.
Okay.
What we understood, any K to five.
Okay, no, you, you all said it right, I just misunderstood, that's all. Okay. Um, I have one more thing real quick. Um, again, I'm just kinda brainstorming Manatee L. Um, you all, Mario or, or Mr. Mendoza, um, who, whomever wants to take this? I'm looking at the old map on the left and the, um, the pocket, the, the yellow box, yeah, yeah, that goes to Freedom, but is now gonna be, is gonna go back to Manatee L. Okay, and then the, done, right below that, that box, do you know about how many kids, what?
Yeah, seventy-three.
That's seventy-three K through five?
At, at one point, and at one point, we had, when discussing that, this pocket here, early on, we had, um, Bashaw had lost this one here. And then when we were needing to balance things out, it was like, alright, let's just go ahead and leave this pocket out, you know, uh, these students here. So that was something, we had, um, we had talked about doing something here with like, uh, seventy-four students here, and seventy-three students here, where these students could also go to Sammaset. That was something we discussed. And moving, uh, seventy-four here, uh, to, to Bashaw. And so that, these would be geographically closer here. And I think, uh, I, I don't know, it, well, there is some difference in the, um, lower socioeconomic status, but not, it's not massively, massively different, I don't know.
No, that's okay. No, that helps, I'm just trying to get as many kids to Manatee Elementary as I can, so.
Oh, don't worry.
Already filled it up.
They're pretty full.
Actually, Manatee is a little bit over capacity, except with the adjusted numbers, I think, we're right at capacity now, so.
Thirteen over, according to.
Yeah, thirteen students over. We got, when we, when we submitted it, we're actually over by more than that, but we gavelled that some students were probably pushing out or going somewhere else. And so then we get the adjusted numbers, and it was a little, it was even closer to.
When he talks about adjusted numbers, what he's talking about is what I brought up earlier, is in the area where these pockets are, some of these students are already attending the school that they, you know, suggested movement to. So like, this one is one forty, and I'm looking at the pink box to, uh, it's green up there, I'm sorry. But right under the Manatee, there's a box there that says one forty, one thirty-three. That was pink to begin with, and they suggested it go to Manatee L. There's eight students that are already going to Manatee L, so I adjusted the number to one thirty-two, because I didn't wanna double count students. It's gonna be really big when we talk about that yellow pocket right here. There's fifty-one students of that two hundred that are already attending Manatee Elementary, walking to Manatee L. So, that's what they're talking about with an adjusted number, I've taken out the students. Now, with that, they are thirteen over. I did not adjust, because if those students can walk to Manatee L, you have some students that are choice in hardship right now in that pocket to another school. In this pocket of one forty, one thirty-three, there's twenty-seven students going to other schools. But I counted them into the Manatee population, because they could walk there. And they may say, that's closer, and that's the school I wanna go to. So I had to have a seat for them. So that's an adjustment there.
Okay, uh, Board.
One more follow-up, if I may.
Okay, Board Member Gold.
As long, as long as we're on this topic.
Okay.
So, a student who's hardship, did they, did they, I guess there's a lot of reasons, but a student potentially hardship back when it was a, a struggling school. It's now a B school. So, um, obviously, we're not losing, I mean, you could, you could lose students to a Hope Scholarship or, um, but I'm just curious, what do we do with the students who leave an elementary school because of its school grade status? Are they, do they automatically just, unless they file paperwork to do, otherwise, they just stay at the school they hardship to?
Once they filed for choice or hardship, then that goes until they finish at that level that they're at. If it's elementary, it goes through fifth grade. If it's at middle school, goes through eighth grade. If it's at high school, goes through twelfth grade. You do it once, and that's it.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Gold.
I can think of a lot of reasons why kids, um, change schools. But I'm pretty sure that the bottom of the list is because of the grade of the school. I just wonder, we talk about the boundary factors and parameters, we talk about socioeconomic composition of the school. What does that mean in terms of the fact that most of the rental housing that is afforded by lower socioecon around these schools? But they've been bused for ten years. Some of these kids have been bused all their lives, that's what they know. How, how do we factor in equity in terms of children whose parents lose their jobs, who get evicted, who loo- uh, uh, all kind of other things other than the grade of the school? Uh, there, there are people in here that, that, that consciously move from neighborhood. How do we, how do we factor that in a meaningful way to help the child's education? Not to meet the, the needs of the district, because we're no longer under a desegregation order. Not to try to make sure that certain socioeconomic groups don't feel threatened by others. But how do we, how do we make sure that everybody has an equitable chance at a quality education?
I think the, the best way to say that is, um, you said that it's not because of school grade, but I think that the one thing that you'll see, Reverend Golden, is that all of our schools are being successful right now. And, um, a child can look at their neighborhood school, and we have one D.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm, it's been a while since I've been into school, I used to know all the numbers for schools. But we have a few Cs, but we have mainly As and Bs, and that's everywhere. Um, so a, a child can pick a school that they wanna go to if there's capacity. And a lot of that is now happening in their neighborhoods. So, a student that was in Manatee L area that got bused to Freedom, they can choose to go to Bashaw. They can choose to go to Sammaset. They can choose to go to Rogers, they can choose to go to Battler. All within a very small circle, probably within a, a mile, I would say, not even a two-mile radius. But in that radius of visual, you would see that those are all good schools, that that child can now go, that he doesn't have to be bused for thirty minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Board Member Golden.
I, I'm probably not gonna say this very articulately, but there is no difference to a kid that lives two blocks from Manatee Elementary between Freedom or Bashaw or Sammaset. The reason he goes, uh, wants to go to Manatee is because the housing there is cheap. You can get an apartment, two-bedroom apartment for thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents a day. Okay, the, the, Mama works at the dollar store up on the corner, so she doesn't need a car. So how do we, how do we realistically use the concept of these community schools that my colleague, uh, Mr. Kennedy is, is bringing to bear? I think that's the most significant development with respect to inner-city schools that we've had a long time. It's, it's good to say, well, they can choose to go to Freedom or choose to go to Bashaw, but if Mama ain't got a car, there's no difference.
Can I, can I just give one example? And it's, because again, situations may be different from, from school to school. So currently, right now, before any changes are happening, Bashaw Elementary situated right here, uh, we have about a hundred ten students or so that are in the lowest twenty-five percent. These are the students that need the most academic support. I'm trying to set up a tutoring program to have, happen after school. Uh, it, this year, we're, it's looking like we're not gonna be able to bus students. And most of these students actually come from these areas, like you mentioned right there. I'm looking now at the possibility where last year, we brought in about eighty-five students here for academic, extra additional academic support after school, uh, through some busing. I'm looking at now, out of a hundred ten, instead of being able to bring eighty-five, ninety, maybe thirty, because they won't have that transportation to provide them that extra academic support. So, so I'm just looking, and the only reason I can come up with that is I'm actually going through this right now at this very moment, trying to set up tutoring programs after school. This time next year, these students wouldn't have to be looking at transportation for that, that they're right there. And if you aren't able to provide the extra support, the ac- extra academic support, that that would be the idea that could help. But again, th- this is just one example with one situation where we are, uh, located with this school.
And I would like to address the, um, community school. So at Manatee L, with, um, gaining these low socioeconomic students, we will have a lot of resources at the community school. We will have specialty services that they will not get in any other school, so they will be supported there. Um, and we really feel that we can offer, uh, the students that we are now moving to that school, a really quality education with wraparound services, um, that will serve that community best.
Was that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, was that part of the factor, or were those some of the factors that you all considered in making this the best option that's presented? Because what I'm looking at over here in what you're recommending eliminates all of those pockets. Is that correct?
So my last question becomes, then, are the two hundred and ninety-some seats that are freed up by this recommendation at Gullet, do they include or exclude the parents who are going there now, who are being zoned back to Freedom? And if that's, if that's.
By exclude, do you mean where they, what's Gullet sitting at the table as well to, like, parents from Gullet?
Right, well, let me, now, let me tell you. Thursday night, I met with two thousand parents, but it wasn't quite that many, but, uh, from Greyhawk. Okay, who wanted to know why they have to go back to, uh, Freedom after having been brought over to Gullet. Uh, it's like a ping pong ball kind of effect. Well, I got an answer to that. The answer is, nobody has to leave as long as there's somebody in the school, and they're gonna stay there. My question is, though, the two hundred and some seats that have been freed up by this, are they still there at Gullet? Or are these the two hundred and some seats that are gonna be occupied by the people?
So, you, you, is it, I think, when, when we looked at it, I think it was the, for example, two hundred eighty-six seats right there and two hundred seventy students there, so, like, those close numbers right there. So when this was going to Manatee, we had about two hundred eighty-six seats or so open. And that's about two hundred seventy to over right there.
Freedom, so, so this.
They're not in the Gullet number.
Okay, so this doesn't change the, the number of people that we do have at Gullet. So Gullet is not impacted at all with respect to the rezoning that we're trying to do.
It will be affected, probably, the way I look at, the way I explain it is, it's gonna be, uh, fifth grade in a kindergarten that are gonna be affected first. You're gonna lose off the top, and you're gonna lose off the bottom, because we're not gonna let, as long as they're stay over capacity, no, no new kindergarteners in. Fifth grade, what, age out, so they'll go. Now you have the zone kids on the kindergarten, but then the following year, you roll up. Those students that wanted to stay will stay. So it'll be a two- or a three-year process before those students or those seats actually come to fruition.
I'm glad you got to where Dr. Hope brought us earlier. He said, we are trying to deal with problems for the next two or three years. I'm not. That's how we got here, because we were dealing with problems for the last two, three years, ten or fifteen years ago. And even then, under the penalty of a desegregation order. So what I'm asking is, how do we get beyond the two- or three-year zoning panacea that we say we won't? And really move to where we do zoning that is equitable to everybody, using all of the resources that we've got, some new, like the community schools, and some old, like more efficient, more effective use of busing? That's, the, I, I'm looking at the boundary factors and the parameters. And quite honestly, these are the same boundary factors and parameters that were used ten years ago. And so I'm, I, I'm, I'm just, I know, this is a very complicated, very sensitive thing. But when you've got people coming and saying, well, they're gonna make our children go back, and then we say the next day, no, they're not gonna be made to go back, but you do have to bus them. How do we, how do we get off of this merry-go-round, I guess that's what I'm saying? This community flagellation that we do every so often?
I'm the superintendent.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Superintendent.
Uh, I, I do think that some of the students, once we rezone, will go to their new zone school. Not everyone is going to decide to stay, uh, and transport their child. We're just giving people the opportunity, per our policy, that if they're there and they want to do that. So it will right-size that school. In addition to needing to clean up the pockets for transportation, that school is over capacity. So we needed to address that concern, like, you know, uh, making sure that we are prepared for the growth that lives right there. Remember, when that school was built, nothing was around that school. So we made pockets around the community to fill up that attendance zone. Where now, you really would, you would not design those pockets that way today. We wouldn't do that. So it really is making the zone as it would have been when it was originally designed and built. But I do think we will right-size, and it will not be overcrowded next year, if these decisions are made. Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice Chair, messenger.
Um, I have a question. Um, I'm, I'm just looking at the original map, but off of Upper River Manatee Road.
That's it, right there.
Yeah, um, where it connects to Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. Yes, that area, that section of the road. Um, there are new communities being built. I can think of Medallion Homes is building, uh, watercolor right now. Yeah. And I, yes, and it's just coming to fruition, and I don't really, it looks like there's gonna be some houses that might be multifamily or duplex type of, I think they call it a villa, that sounds fancier. But, um, there are, it's different housing that's being built there, it's coming quickly, so was that accounted?
Apartments and the planning, we have no apartments that are going to be built in there, but we have single-family homes as well as villas, um, that are going to be built in there. And when I looked at that, I, I, I'm gonna lie to you if I tell you a number, 'cause it's, it's been a while since I looked at that particular one, but I'll look it up. It was not, uh, in overabundance, I'm gonna say it was a, um, sixty-five elementary children that were going to be planned for that community, and I could be off five or ten.
Okay, so that was taken into account with this planning?
Yes.
I mean, that, that's one of my big questions, that, that's, there's, there's a whole lot of land back in there that.
You, and there's, there, it's phase one, two, and three. Phase three has been put off, from what I've been told. Phase one and two is on the books to, to build, and that's where the, I'm gonna say fifty-five, sixty elementary students. Um, and that is, right now, along Upper Manatee, um, north of State Road sixty-four to the bridge, that is the only development.
Yeah, well, I think Copper Leaf is finished, done.
Yes, it is done.
Okay, that was my own question, that, that, was that taken into account for numbers for Freedom?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very, very.
This is only A and C, so you got B coming up.
Okay, B.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Dave Morgan, uh, captain of, uh, B. Um, and, uh, you guys, uh, I kinda like to just take you through a little bit of the process, the thirty-thousand-foot view of, of what happened with, with our committee. Um, everything was wonderful. The group was an amazing group. We worked together really well and had great representation from, from all of our wonderful schools that were in there. Um, so what we started off with and, and Don gave us the, the perfect tools for the job and everything, uh, with the spreadsheet. Um, we started off with a spreadsheet that, that really made it helpful to, you know, take this pocket and put it into here and, and it did the calculations for us. And right off the bat, you'll see the low-hanging fruit. It was just, you know, right in the neighborhood of Manatee Elementary. Um, so we, we grabbed those and, and part of our goals were for the children to not be bused, you know, we've, we've heard it all, all afternoon. Not be bused all around and go to a school that is truly in their community or in their backyard. Um, but we also had a, a goal of helping relieve some of Gullett's, um, overcrowding and their future expansion of more children coming to that particular zone territory. So we had a few goals as a committee. One, to, you know, alleviate children being transported in the mornings and the afternoons. And also, uh, you know, to free up the Gullett. We wanted with the ability to free up Gullett, unlike a couple of the others where they didn't have overcrowding. We were just trying to, um, make it more geographically sensible. Um, we had the ability with Gullett to try to fill where we're taking from other schools to fill Manatee Al and not leave them with much less students, losing teachers, losing staff. So, so it, it made it a, a very nice process to try to keep that level. Because no one wants to lose any of their staff, any of their students, any of their teachers, but, you know, we have to do what's right for the children. So we started with a few different plans and in the beginning, what we noticed was people were going, "Well, yeah, but if we take that zone, you know the people will get upset." Or if we move this zone, you know the people are gonna get upset." And we kinda stopped ourselves right in the middle there and we all agreed that we're not here for what maybe will make people happy or sad. We're here for the children. So once we got to that point and we said, "Listen, we need to do what's best for the children, not what certain people or, or pockets might think," it became really a quick process for us. We started looking at, you know, this geographically makes sense. Manatee Elementary is a wonderful school. It's gonna have some great things for it and its community. And we grabbed, as you can see, I'm sorry, I'm putting the wrong, we grabbed basically its neighborhood and put it into there. That did free up a bit of Gullett, but Gullett was still overcrowded even with moving the, the stuff that just makes sense to go to Gullett or to go to, I'm sorry, to Manatee Elementary. Um, so we started moving a couple of pockets up here that were very close to Freedom. And we split this particular pocket here because this kinda made sense being south of sixty-four to go to Bashaw. And then the north of the sixty-four made sense for Freedom. We also did a small change that I think would basically be the major change between the two, uh, or the three committees, A and C being, which was we went with, this was Manatee Al. But we didn't move it into Sammaset. We moved it into Bashaw. With our thought process there being forty-fourth is going to extend in the not-too-distant future, making it an easy flow to Bashaw. And we traded them a pocket that didn't make a lot of sense up here. I always get that one wrong, Don, you corrected me on it. Which is we moved to Sammaset. It's, this pocket right there, we moved in, no, no, no.
Nope, you just, the only difference was you moved, um, the Manatee Southern Pocket from Sammaset to Bashaw.
You're right. Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm sorry. So we moved that to Bashaw. And, uh, that way it, to us, it made sense to go there and then moved those pockets as you can see there. With our numbers, um, we really liked the way it, it came out for us. We kept almost every school roughly the capacity that they were when we started the process. Um, except, with the exception of Manatee gaining because it had a lot of seats and the geographic territory. And the exception of Gullett, which was a part of our goal to lower its capacity, knowing that, one, with the process, we were told as in, if you remove a zone, the children can go there. Knowing that a lot of those children will continue to finish at Gullett, which will, we felt pretty good that as those children are filtering out and that community, as we know it, is growing. It would make a very nice transition to where they're not dropping off the map, but they're also not overcrowded. So that's kinda the process that we went through and in the end, our map, we were unanimous on, on, uh, as a committee on the layout of it and, and how it went. And, uh, yeah, that was, uh, I'll give it. Questions on ours or?
Yeah, Alex, uh, Board Member Golden.
What's the difference? I mean, just in a nutshell.
What the difference between theirs and ours?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, basically-
No, let me ask you what I really wanna ask. Why is yours better?
Why is ours better? I'll tell you this and, and, uh, Mr. Mendoza can back me up because we, I'm a parent of proud prince of Bashaw.
Okay.
Um, I said, we even had a text back and forth. I said, "You know what? No matter which one they go with, it's a lot better than what currently is on this map here." Um, so I, for personally for me, I like that we kept a little more geographic to me. Um, I can't remember A and C personally, but, um, it, it, it just, uh, kept the numbers of each school not dropping off a lot. Um, at first Freedom, when we first did a few of them, Freedom really dropped in attendance. And there's a couple of small communities, but for the most part, the Freedom territory is built out. Bashaw, Sammaset, and Manatee are built out. So we didn't want them to drop low because I know what'll happen is if they're low and Gullett and some of these others start growing. We're gonna be rezoning because we've got no, or, you know, no room here and room at Bashaw, then we're gonna start pocketing. And pockets are not what we want. So we tried to keep them filled as much as possible. That was where we went through the process. I'm not sure if theirs was much different, but that's the process.
Thank you. Board Members?
Mr. Martin.
Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
I just wanna, I wanna sum up for the Grayhawk Landing folks that are here and I wanna make sure I have all these details correct. So with these approved changes, there will be room at Gullett to choice into?
No.
No.
They are full. But those that are there will stay. They are accounted for. Okay? They're not being forced to leave to go to Freedom.
Okay, that's what I heard earlier. There's gonna be some room for choice. Maybe, maybe I'm mixing up the schools.
Well, they don't, if, if, uh, a section, they are right now, they are one, two hundred and fifteen overcapacity. If they have, you took out about four hundred students, if, if this passes, if, you know, if A passes, A and C, you've got a hundred and ninety-four in this pocket, you have sixty-three in this pocket. If a lot of them decide to go to the new school that they're zoned for, that's four hundred. If fifty percent go, you're just at capacity or you're below. Now I can look at it and say, okay, we look at it, if they've got a hundred seats, I'll open up forty of those seats for choice or hardship, saving sixty for the community. I won't, yeah, that's where we got in trouble with some of this is that because if there was space, we filled it up. I mean, we filled it up to the brim and then all of a sudden we have a lot of building and that's their zone school. So that's how that works, Mr. Kennedy. You know, you've got four hundred that you're about ready to lose. If you get fifty percent to leave, they're gonna be at or below capacity. Which will allow then, depending on the total number of seats available. But again, that's with Gullett's current students staying where they are. It's the new ones that are rising up in those zones that wouldn't be.
Okay, I, no, I, I get it. I, um, that you hit on the second point I was gonna get to. Any, any student that's there from Grayhawk Landing can remain there.
Yes.
However, their siblings will not be-
That's correct. They are overcapacity.
Attach a sibling. Okay, that makes sense. I, like I said, I'm just kinda summarizing for my own, um, my own process too. And I, I, Don, you also hit this too, but I think like just through natural growth of the area, um, you know, give it another one or two school years and we're gonna be sitting back here again with Gullett a hundred or two hundred overcapacity. Because I, I was there, I was at Gullett last Friday morning, um, and, um, the car line is over an hour long. It's, it's just really, and, uh, the school runs very well and the kids are super happy and they're, uh, it, it's really just a positive place to be in the morning. But at some point, it's like, when does this become just too many kids in the same place at the, at the same time? So, um, I appreciate the work of, of you guys, of this, these committees as well. Um, it does seem to use your, the low-hanging fruit. Seems like these Bradenton sections are pretty easy. Let's just get them back to their, to their neighborhood school. But, but yeah, I mean, this is, this is our, this is our, this is growth. I mean, we gotta, we, not every ten years, but maybe every three or four years, come back and do this.
Can I share a little bit too of some of the, the members of the committee were telling us some stories of these children here? And speci- specifically the Gullett, they would show up late to school because the busing would get them there late. They were eating their breakfast in the class. It's a disruption. The teacher's getting the day started. Fifteen, twenty minutes later, a whole bus of kids show up. You have to re-get the process going again. Um, so, you know, when, when you hear those type of stories and it's every day it's happening, it, it has to, yeah.
Board Member Golden.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I'm sorry. I, I probably wasn't listening as careful as I should have been. I heard you say that the children who are at Gullett will stay there, but their siblings?
If they're not attending Gullett, not. If there's a third grader and a fourth grader, they both stay.
All right.
They both stay.
Okay. But the caveat is they can stay, but they have to transport themselves.
That's correct. That is correct.
Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, are there any other caveats?
Not, no, no, sir.
Okay, all right.
As far as transport too, I believe, I haven't heard it on our committee yet, but I, if I'm not mistaken, we were somewhere between five and seven buses we were freeing up.
Um, I've got that here in just a minute. That'll, I'll go over.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, um, that, that is A, B, and C and, and this was our biggest committee, uh, because of the number of schools that were involved. Um, I think we had the most. Busing, um, and transportation, what you'll see out of this is you're gonna gain, um, in A and C, you will have two free routes. There's three buses that service this area here out to Freedom. Two of those buses will be free. One bus will take and move these students. There's three buses altogether there. One will come from this that goes out to Freedom and will take these students down to Bashaw. In this Plan B over here, you will lose one of the three buses that you gained in A and C. So you're gonna have two routes that are going to be free, repurposed in A and C. You're gonna have one free in Committee B's route. And one of the reasons why is because you have this area right here west of the interstate that's gonna be separate and go over to, um, Freedom. And then you have this area here where you're picking up that other bus and you're going down to Bashaw. Uh, the little triangle right here is a bus by itself. So there's a split between A and C, or I'm sorry, A, C, and then B, where this one has a little triangle and, okay, you guys can see where I'm pointing. Um, this, uh, it's an apartment complex. That's gonna go down to Bashaw. That's one bus. Then you have another bus that will come over here and be utilized to take these kids to Freedom. Where if you look at A's, uh, A and C, they have this area here going to Bashaw. So the bus, there's an extra bus involved that would be saved because it's going down to Bashaw. Sir.
Mr. Sauer, but I'm, I'm looking at A and C.
Uh-huh.
And overall benefits, save two buses.
Yep.
I'm looking at Plan B, overall, save two buses. And you said one saves, A and C saves two buses, but B saves one, which, uh-
One, two, it's not one?
A and B.
A and, oh, but, okay, I, I stand corrected there then. It's A and B is both two.
Okay, so would it be a fast statement to say that with respect to transportation, there is no difference in terms of A and C and B? With respect to transportation, the overall transportation benefit?
I, I'm gonna have Transportation answer that. Just, they have it. I read it off of this. He schooled me on the notes so that I could try to answer, but these are particular to transportation.
What was your question, sir?
Well, uh, Plan A and C, well, what Mr. Sauer said was that Plan A and C saved two buses. Plan B's overall saved one bus. And I'm looking at the, the, the notes here that say overall, Plan A and C saved two buses. Possibly use them to assist with overloads or create new routes. And then I'm looking at Plan B, says overall, save two buses, possibly use them to assist with overloads. And so my question is, as it relates to transportation, neither A, B, or C are different as it relates to transportation.
The only difference is that one pocket is going to Gullett here and the other pocket's going to Freedom.
Okay.
The number of buses that we're going to save is still the same.
The same, okay. And so what really makes the difference between A, B, and C is the students that are going to be zoned to Freedom. Being what is now a pocket of students that are zoned to Gullett. Is that right? Okay.
West of the interstate.
Okay, west of the interstate. And that is not the Grayhawk subdivision.
That is correct.
Good, good. That's great. Okay.
Any other questions?
We'll talk about that during the break. No, that's it. Thank you, seriously. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that is again the, um, transportation. Um, i- if you do look at, it does, um, keep everything geographic. Um, north of State Road sixty-four, south of State Road sixty-four, no matter what plan that you do choose, um, with that. You don't have, um, pockets going, you do, you have one pocket that is gonna go from west of the interstate to the east of the interstate and that's in, in Plan B. If you were looking at A and C, this area right here is to Bashaw as well as the little triangle here. So you would have everything west of the interstate would be Bashaw and then everything east of the interstate would be Freedom and Gullett. And that's the difference of, of the, the two plans. Okay? And our last one, Area Five, is the Terra, uh, Braden River and the Daughtry area. And we'll go, there's two groups that, um, were unanimous in, in what they did and that was A and C. So we'll go ahead and have them come up first.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Robin Riddle. I'm actually a parent of, uh, child at Terra Elementary. And Braden River, um, when we were doing our group, we all agreed upon that we would move this pocket right here over to, um, Daughtry. And the reasons, several reasons why we all agreed upon that is, first of all, the students wouldn't have to take a bus at all. Several of them can just walk across the street and they'd be at their school. And an advantage of that would be, they would be able to partake in after-school activities. Their parents not only wouldn't have to take a bus to go to conferences, but they could actually go to the conferences, be more involved in the school. The students that are now being bused are currently unable to go to any of the Terra Knights, um, Academy and/or, very few of them participate in after-school. Um, or in, um, the Spirit Knights and/or anything else with the, with, um, being bused like that. Um, we all agree that communication is absolutely key with the transition here, that, um, everybody would have to have commu- very good communication. Letter sent out, phone calls sent out, or phone calls being made to advise these people who are being affected by the area. Um, we all agree that choice opens in December and that choice should close when they, um, when it fills up. Braden River is losing approximately thirty-four students with this rezoning and Terra is losing approximately a hundred and thirty-five-ish. and Terra is losing approximately a hundred and thirty-five-ish. And we, Terra believes that we will get most of them back with the choice, as well as Braden River will get a lot of them, because twenty-two of them in Terra are fourth graders going into the fifth grade, so most likely they will stay. But that's what we all, we, um, A and C both agree on this. We would, um, also free up three buses with this, um, recommendation.
Hi, I'm Betsy Dinkle Perry, I am the reading coach at Terra Elementary. And as you can see from the map, um, to us, this was a pretty easy decision, just because, you know, here they, here are the pockets, and here is our school. So a lot of these students are spending a lot of time on buses. We see firsthand, kids are late to school, we have kids that are, if they miss the bus in the morning, they're not making it to school, because they don't have transportation. Uh, we also see in the afternoon, if, um, if for some reason they were to miss the bus or have an activity after school, they are not able to be picked up, which limits them from being in tutoring and being in some of the fun things that we do after school. So, um, we did have a few concerns and hopes. Um, we would hope, because there would be about a hundred and fifty if everybody did decide to go to Daughtry, um, we would have more kids walking to school. So we would hope we would take a, a look at the crossing guard situation, and make sure that they can hold the capacity of how many kids will be walking to and from school. Um, we also hope there'd be a commitment of resources through our, um, FTE allocations, that all of the services would follow the students, and that, um, the numbers at Daughtry would be followed closely, so we're not just moving the overcrowding issue to Daughtry, especially because they have a dual-language program that is starting this, that started this year in kindergarten, and they may have more choice to that school as that program continues throughout the grade levels. And that's it.
Oi. Okay.
And this is Committee B?
Good afternoon, my name's Bob Sloman, I'm a proud parent of a kindergartner at Terra Elementary. Um, and I was chosen to, uh, leave Committee B, but this is definitely a full committee, uh, decision on how we put together this map. Uh, we, um, we understood and, and partially of what Committee A and C did, and we fully agree that these two pockets cannot be bussed across town. Um, but, we looked at it, and we fortunately had three Daughtry, uh, representatives, the principal, a kindergarten teacher, and a parent. And when we looked at the numbers of adding a hundred and eighty-one students to Daughtry, that put them eighteen over capacity. Um, however, that eighteen over capacity is only K through five with their current enrollment. That's not including what was brought to us as the numbers of the migration students that come throughout the school year, which the principal estimated about another forty. On top of that, their VPK units, that has four classes, that's about another thirty-seven. So you add approximately seventy-seven more students on top of being eighteen over capacity, and you're looking at more like ninety-five over capacity by mid-year. Um, that brought several concerns to all parties of Daughtry, especially with the VPK, because that's a vital part of their community, is what they expressed. Um, and I know that we actually brought in, let me start with the fact that we, we went outside the box, and we brought in an extra school. Um, I know that wasn't the original plan, but when we looked at the map, we could not come up with something that would just justify sending kids across to county or overloading Daughtry. Um, so we brought in Kanan into our map. Uh, Mr. Sauer was very gracious to get us the numbers for Command, Kanan. Uh, and we started looking at the areas around on how, if we included Kanan, could we get their numbers to work with the three schools included? That all three schoo- all four schools, which all four schools have VPK, and as, and as a student who, or as a father of a son who went through VPK last year at Terra, knows how important that is. I, we felt it was important to make sure that their numbers would be low enough that all four schools could not only keep the VPK unit, realize that Daughtry's gonna have additional students added throughout the school year, and not overcrowd them. So, what we did, if you look at, this is our original map, and then we redid Terra and Kanan by taking this pocket right here, the hundred and seven, sixty-three, fifty-nine. That's actually a Kanan pocket. If neighbors with Terra students, so they are being sent to school with their neighbors, not crossing State Route seventy to go to Kanan, they'd actually take a bus right there. Then, we broke up the Terra pocket. Uh, we asked Mr. Sauer to break it up based on a community line, so that the communities stayed together, but Terra was split in, to two parts. Part of Terra would go, sorry about that. Part of Terra would go to Daughtry, and that would be a hundred and fourteen students. And then the other part of Terra would go to Kanan, which would be fifty-five. Then also Braden River students, which was approximately thirty-two students, would also go to Kanan. And then there was one more pocket of Daughtry of twenty-eight students that we also sent to Kanan. If you look at our overall numbers for Kanan, the only, uh, fact that Kanan has is different communities going to them, but they only increased by four students, which still keeps them ninety-seven students under capacity. Plenty of room for a VPK unit, so I'm not sure if Kanan's VPK numbers. Um, unfortunately, Kanan was not represented in these groups, I know that's a problem, but this is the only thing that we felt would be fair, uh, for all the schools involved. That would then put Daughtry at seventy-three under, giving them room for their increase in students throughout the school year. Braden River, the only effect Braden River had was they lost thirty-two students, so they're a hundred and twenty-two under. Terra, they'd still lose some students, they would be, go from five over to fifty-seven under. Um, and then the biggest, uh, issue I know when we presented this to Superintendent Saunders is, uh, if we did this, Kanan would turn into a Title I school, because it would take them to, from seventy percent to seventy-seven percent. My committee and I unfortunately did not find out those numbers until the morning that we presented to Superintendent Saunders, because we met multiple times, including the night before, uh, because we took this very serious, as all the committees I believe did. Um, and unfortunately, the only numbers we could get was the total capacity at Kanan until the following morning. Only thing I can say is, I know public persona of turning a school Title I is not going to be, make people excited. It does give them the extra fundings that you guys are obviously aware of. Um, but that is what we came up with. The one last thing, I, I looked at the bussing, and I know when you look at the bussing that Mr. Sauer's gonna present, it's gonna say that, um, Group A and Group C are gonna save you three buses, and our group is only gonna save you one bus. However, if you also look at where the two buses were going, one of those buses was able to be used to bus Kanan kids. Well, in my mind, again, I'm not with transportation, but I would think that bus could then be the bus that takes instead of these kids to Kanan, these kids to Terra. So, in theory, at least, what I would hope would come about that is we're only one bus less than them instead of two.
Board member, Board member Hope.
Um, and you may not be able to answer it, it's, it's not just the buses. How many minutes of children on the buses are saved in your plan compared to Plan A, C?
Well, according to what we have here, Braden River middle, uh, middle school students are gonna save daily a hundred and three minutes, and so, an hour and forty minutes.
That's how many students?
Uh, for the Braden River was thirty-two kids. And then Terra's a hundred and fifty-one students are gonna save daily their back an hour and two minutes. Um, now, I do not know how long the transportation would take for the Kanan pocket that we sent to Terra, but I mean, they're right next door to Terra Elementary, so I can imagine that would be an adequate time.
So, Mr. Sauer, do you know the, the difference in total, uh, child minutes on buses between A and C and B?
Yeah, um, and, thank you, Juan, good one. Um, for the A and C, um, currently, ah, okay, I just have current, and what it says here on time and distance for twenty-twenty-one, the routes will be determined.
So we'll just assume that the, the, the three buses are full?
Yeah.
Uh, so we're still gonna have two buses of kids that are gonna be spending time on buses?
Yeah.
We won't have if we go with Plan B?
Over- overall, Plan A and C...
Saves the most minutes?
Yeah, um, overall, three buses gained, it says. Um, on Plan B, overall, one bus gained.
Okay, so, maybe thirty-three percent of the savings of A and C?
Yeah, yes.
Alright, thank you.
And if I can comment, if you don't mind, we're saving these kids all the bus ride, just like the other two groups. Our only difference is, the kids from Kanan are going to Terra and not Kanan, but we're saving all those kids the same amount.
Next chair.
Necessarily true, because...
Well, take it at those...
A net, a net perspective, a net perspective, a net perspective.
Yeah.
Wait, wait, Chair Messenger has some questions.
I, I had questions about pre-K. Um, you, you bring up a really valid point, that's, and, and, how many pre-K units are at Daughtry right now?
Four.
And with these projected numbers, how many pre-K units would be allowed to be there?
Pre-K units, the reason we have so many is because we have empty seats.
Right.
Harley is across the street, which is where our early learning center is, that's where that department is. They would just be placed there.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily change the availability of pre-K units if the school is full?
It would not, we would just have them housed at the Daughtry si- I mean, at the Harley site, instead of at Daughtry.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, uh, Board member Golden.
Yes, I, I, I did have one more question of the, the transportation person.
Juan?
From, um, the, um, where is?
He, he's coming.
Oh, okay.
You got Juan?
Yeah, the, um, that pocket that we have west of seventy-five and north of sixty-four, going over to Freedom under one scenario. Okay, and then the other one. Do they, do you, how do you get to Freedom under that plan that goes over seventy-five? Do you go down sixty-four, or do you go down, um, whatever that back road is there, uh, behind Walmart?
Oh, oh, yeah, um...
You talking about K Road, sir?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
K Ro- okay, yeah. So if, if, if you did that, would you do the transportation down K Road, or would you have to come down sixty-four?
Use both, it depends, if we are going to use that same bus to pick up the neighborhood, I forget, is it Hardest Harbor?
Yeah.
Which is above, cross the K Road above seventy-five in that neighborhood, we could link it, and we could take them that way. Or we could pick up the same neighborhood that you're talking, you're referencing, and pick them up and use Sable sixty-four to go to Freedom.
Reason I'm asking is because sixty-four is just terrible
Yes.
to try to get, to, to negotiate during the school times. Okay, now, the other alternative takes that pocket down to...
Bashaw.
Bashaw. That, that would bring you some, out on sixty-four...
More consistency, as everything west of I seventy-five would go all down to Bashaw.
But if, to get down to Bashaw, it would have to go on Morgan Johnson Road, which is a two-lane... Okay.
Which is already a Bashaw zone.
Say again?
Which is already a Bashaw zone as far as Morgan Johnson.
What, which, in your opinion, from a transportation standpoint, which of those options would be better? So that we don't have a lot of...
If transportation, um, driven, I would say Option A and C, whereas Option A is the best one.
That's the one going up K Road and back around to Freedom?
No, that's the one that's strictly going down to Bashaw.
Okay, don't go in that, okay, taking those kids, come out on sixty-four, go west, and go down Morgan Johnson.
We wanna use I seventy-five and sixty-four to kinda divide up all these zones.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Board member Golden.
Thank you, I have five, five different zones to, areas to look at with, with three different committees, and it is a very long. Um, the one thing that I did, um, write on my sheet here as, as we talked about transportation, um, you'll save eight or seven routes, wha- whatever you do, whate- whichever plans you pick, that's what you're gonna save. Again, those are not gonna be, I don't have to hire eight or seven drivers or anything like that, those, those are all gonna be repurposed. They're gonna take away the double routes, they're gonna make sure that kids get on time to school, um, so that transportation can be more efficient. Um, that is my presentation with the committees, before you...
Okay.
It's a long one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sauer.
That's worked.
Alright, the, uh, next thing on the agenda is an introduction, and, uh... Mary, I think you're up.
Good afternoon, um, I'm very pleased to introduce you all to, uh, Lori Mathewson. Lori, um, you all have seen her resume, um, the Audit Committee, uh, interviewed her, and, uh, we also had a, an individual from, uh, Mark Smith from, uh, CRI, sit in and, uh, give his, uh, his opinion. And, uh, we, uh, the committee unanimously recommends her hire.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm very pleased to be here today, I'm very pleased to have been selected for this position. Uh, it's kind of a dream job for me. Uh, my background is internal audit and external audit, but to be able to come into this type of collaboration with CRI, and to help to build and shape an internal audit department is just beyond exciting for me. So, I'm very, very pleased to be here today.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you.
We're pleased to have you.
Okay, alright.
Let me, let me get, let me get this, let me, let me get this straight. You're excited about...
Audit!
We, we have, um, we have hired the queen of the nerds, that's what we've done, good gracious alive.
Man, man, man.
Oh my goodness!
No, it's, uh...
And she's serious too, I mean, you can tell, she's real, this is great. Okay, well, thank you.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
You were at Ernst and Miami, which office did you work at?
I worked in Miami office.
The Biscayne?
Yes.
I was only there about twenty years before you, I guess.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Great view.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It actually...
That, that's how they got me to move from Tampa down there.
Oh, really?
They showed me the twenty-seventh floor. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, the next item is a review of the Witt Elementary School project, eh? Uh, Draggers? Oh, man. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm excited to be here today to discuss the Witt Elementary addition and renovation project. Um, first of all, I want to introduce the team, I'm not sure you all have had a chance to meet them. We have Ted Williamson with Williamson Dakar and Associates Architects, and Michaela Felici, uh, Felisa Dario, uh, she's our project manager for Witt. And then we have Greg Witt with Half Acre Construction, and Brian Mayby with the Department of Construction Services. So today, we're gonna discuss the two options, um, we're calling them, number one, the some now, some later. That's the total project budget of twenty-point-four million, um, with an expectation that some second phase would need to occur in approximately five years. And then the all-in project, which has a total project budget of twenty-three million, and we'll provide a description of the site work and items that have been completed, um, and, or are in process. So we're gonna provide a very high-level overview of each option, and then we'll do a deeper dive, um, into each building and what is included in those two options. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ted Williamson.
Alright, thank you, Jane. Uh, can I go through, I, the presentation here? How do you move this down? How do you move? How do you move?
Let's try this. It's not touchscreen. Well. Yeah, it's not doing the page down.
Okay. How about that? Yeah.
They have the handout. You're all set with the handout?
Yes, we do.
All right, thank you, Jane. Uh, I'd like to kind of go over, uh, the scope of do you, you have a handout or?
We do.
Okay, okay. Uh, the first thing I'd like to do is kind of go over the, you know, the, kind of the overall, you know, scope of work at, uh, at Witt Elementary. And the first drawing we have up here is the some now and some later. And I think most of you are familiar with the, on the, kind of the north side of the site, seven acres were added uh, to the, to the campus here a couple of years ago, uh, so that they could, we could do, uh, my little school could do a larger drop-off queuing because right now, there's a lot of cars, you know, they back up on the road to be able to get those cars off the road as well as provide additional area for the school to actually expand some classrooms on the site. And so that's really kind of, you know, started this project. And so the first, uh, item we have, kind of the overview here, is some now, some later. Uh, just kind of go over the, kind of the broad picture is, you know, right now, the current things that actually are underway on the north half of the site is doing the play areas and the car loop. You know, those are actually under construction now to get those done and get the cars off the site. Uh, and other than that, you know, we're looking at what to do with all the buildings. That's kind of what we're here today. And so under the some now, some later, there's two buildings that have major renovations, which is B-one and B-five. And B-one, a lot of that, and we'll go into a little more detail, is, you know, security and single point of entry as well as, you know, kind of access through the campus to provide security, uh, you know, for the students. And then, you know, B-five, one of the big things are, uh, the media center in there. And, and I think most of you know, over the last twenty years, there's been a lot of changes in how you deliver media. And so that's, makes sense to, you know, kind of renovate that to really bring that up to current standards. But in kind of the overall picture in the some now, some later, basically, uh, buildings B-two, B-three and B-four are very similar in, under the some now, some later. The only work that would really be done there was replacing the roofs because all the roofs on campus are in, in need of re- of replacement. They're of age, uh, there's leaks on there and it's time to replace them on campus. And then the other item we have is building B-seven, which is a new eight-classroom building, uh, that would be added to the site to increase the capacity and get rid of the portables, uh, that are on-site right now. And so, you know, that's kind of the overall of some now, some later. Uh, and then when you go to all-in right now, which would be a twenty-three million dollar project, it really, B-one and B-five generally stay the same as far as the scope of work. It's basically buildings B-two, B-three and B-four, uh, rather than just doing the roof work, it would be doing the HVAC replacement on the inside of the building. And when you do that, normally you do the lights and see, you know, putting LED lights in there and replacing the ceiling. And then, you know, some upgrades like painting and, you know, finishes inside those buildings.
Can, can we put that slide?
Oh.
The twenty-three million dollar slide back?
Okay, yeah.
We didn't see it, yeah, but if you could put
Okay, that's, okay, that's this one right here, uh, where you have B-two, B-three and B-four. You know, that's really the
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you're
All right, you brought up, you brought a, you brought up an interesting buzzword, security. Uh, go back to the slide. Can somebody keep that slide up there? The, the all-in now?
It's on here.
It's not here.
No, they'll, they'll flip it. There we go. They'll do it in the control room.
All right, so I want to talk about security. Is our director of security here?
No.
No, I wanted him here.
I'm listening.
All right, uh, so I want to look at these buildings. And I want to talk about the twenty-three million dollars to renovate this campus. Have you been out to Barbara Harvey Elementary School?
No, I have not.
Okay. As I follow this line, members, I want to think about security and I want to think about twenty-three million dollars, which is about the price tag to build a brand-new Barbara Harvey, uh, which is a lot easier to secure than we're talking about all-in now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven freestanding buildings. And, I mean, I have, I, I'm gonna tell you, I have a real problem with this because we're, we're talking about dumping twenty-three. By the time we finish, it's probably gonna be, does that include the three million dollars for all the site work of the other parcel? So, we're gonna talk about twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars to renovate a campus that we now know, given the various events around safety and security, makes absolutely no sense at all. And when we walk through Barbara Harvey and the ability to secure that facility and have everything is brand-new, you know, I mean, looking at twenty-year maintenance costs for, for I, I cannot, I'm trying to figure out how, given the fact we built Barbara Harvey, that we're standing here today looking at an increased budget for Witt that's adding an initial, initial three million dollars to it and we're gonna renovate a seven-building campus when we can have a brand-new Barbara Harvey for close to the same money? I mean, even if we had to make a, pay a little bit more, which I don't think we will, I mean, I got a real problem with coming to us with this kind of plan to ask us to add more money in it for all-in all-now. Uh, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And, and the feedback I got, Mr. Chairman, was the construction department said that the state would not allow us to replace Witt because it's only twenty years old. Well, I'm pretty confident based on the conversations I've had, if we go up and we show them why we don't want to spend twenty-three million dollars to renovate seven buildings, we want to build a brand-new building to current standards that we can more easily secure single-point entry. You're talking about, we need single-point of entry into seven buildings. I mean, I, I, I don't know how long we're gonna carry the conversation, but I, I would really like to see a plan to compare, not all-in all-now, to compare spending twenty-three or twenty-four million dollars and replace the entire campus with what we have experience with, which is Barbara Harvey Elementary School. Because I, I'm gonna have a real hard time spending a lot of money to put a new roof and, you know, drywall and, and maybe some HVAC when I can walk out, I can drive out to Parrish and I can see exactly what we can get for about, about that amount of money. And I would have liked to have seen that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Board Member Hope.
Thank you.
I think that, uh, Vice Chair Messenger has some comments and I think that Board Member Kennedy does too.
Uh, I have a question. At what point did you know it was going to be over the twenty point four million dollars? At what month, year, whatever? At what point?
June twenty-eighth.
June twenty-eighth is when you knew? So Okay, but if that's the meeting you had with her, you didn't know that beforehand? You didn't know before that day?
That's when we got the GMP.
Was June twenty-eighth? Okay, I made, I made myself a timeline of all the things that we've approved, so June. I guess I really understand where Dr. Hopes is coming from, um, because I, I kind of share your frustration that this is now, we're inching up to twenty-three million dollars when we paid for that study, when the study said that total replacement cost of the school was twenty-five million. And I feel like for this twenty-three million, are the bathrooms getting renovated?
Yes, they're getting all-new fixtures.
They're getting all-new everything?
Yes.
Okay, and for the twenty-three million dollars, it'll be like a brand-new school? It'll be everything.
And Brayden River, that'll be the same as the other prototype.
Sure, and I understand that, and I spoke to Mr. Marshall. Mr. Marshall was so good to me, uh, I think I came, went there a week or two ago and he kind of explained to me that Basha actually got to go through another renovation that Witt never got to go through in past years. And so that's why it's a little bit more for building one because the other schools have kind of already had some renovations in there and redone some of the floor plan and I got that and I understand that. I really appreciate him explaining that to me so that we can further understand that. But I do understand Dr. Hopes's point of view, if that is a possibility to fit on this land, perhaps that's a better use of the public's tax dollars, plus it'd be more secure. Is that possible on even this piece of land? I mean, I'm not a land person, so I gotta ask somebody that's an expert.
I would be, we would be happy to price that and look at those options. What we do need to consider here is that for this Witt property, we have a site work cost of, well, three point eight million that we didn't have at Barbara Harvey. So Barbara Harvey was twenty-eight million, this is twenty-three million, but it includes three point eight million of site work that's already started, already approved. So I think we, we would just have to look at that. We'd also need to look at, when we renovate a school that was built before class size amendment, we, we tend to have to renovate more square feet because the average class size at Witt is a thousand fifty. The average class size at Barbara Harvey is eight hundred and fourteen, which is great, but short of gutting everything and completely reconfiguring and adding additional costs, you renovate the spaces you have in terms of classrooms. So we could step back and, and price up a replacement, but then we would have to add the site work and the demolition.
I have another question. So if you knew in June what the actual price was going to be, why in November of two thousand eighteen were we at, told it would be twenty point four? And, and we approved Phase One and Phase Two and a guaranteed maximum price for site work with the understanding, all of that said, twenty point four million dollars. So why are we now being told something? I would consider this radically different because whatever we, if we choose to do this, we're taking something away from some other school that also needs a lot of work. We know that that's happening. So how, I have, I'm having a real struggle with knowing, I have approved twenty point four million since a year, pa- more than a year ago and several phased plans and now I'm being told, well, that, that number wasn't right. I, I honestly feel like I've been lied to and that's really genuine because over and over again, things have been presented to us. We've approved those things, it had a specific number. Every single time we got one of those phased plans. And now we're being told something different.
With each of those plans that you approved, they lacked detail. So the schematics came and we said, we think we can meet this budget. The design development drawings came. We said, we think we can meet this budget, but we're, we're apprehensive because construction costs have increased. And I promise you, I would not lie to any one of you. I am a taxpayer, I'm a parent and I feel exactly the same way that you do. But when the numbers come in and they, at that time, the numbers came in and they were twenty-five million and change and we said, we have to meet with the superintendent, we have to figure this out. We met with her, we were tasked with getting it, getting the scope back down under twenty million. So that's what we did and that's what we're bringing here to you today. The replacement value of that school is twenty-five million.
Here's another question. Had you known those numbers beforehand, before coming to us, would you have been able to alter some of the work that's already been done, like the car line? Because I went out there, there's lot, putting up lots of dirt. I understand why they're doing what they have to do, I get it. Would that have been able to have been altered so that, those plans have been altered so that this would have stayed under budget before doing this phased plan?
We had to get that length of queuing. That was required based on the number of cars that were on Rye Road next to the fire station.
Okay.
So we had to add that linear foot of queuing regardless of what we did.
No matter what. Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Kennedy.
Two things. One, the first is a comment and clearly there's some frustration here on the board, but I would just, I, I get, I get a little prickly anytime that board members are taking stuff out on staff.
I'm not
It, it just feels that way. It feels that way to me, so.
I said, I felt like I was being lied to. It's not saying anyone up here has lied to me. I just, that is how I am perceiving the information I'm being told. I understand she may not have been given the numbers, but still, then I feel like someone else is not giving accurate information to her. That's not on her.
I'm just, I'm just telling you what I felt in the moment. So, uh, my, my other is a question and that is, um, uh, because I think Dr. Hopes, it's an interesting idea. And I'm going through this, the same thing with my own house right now. Like, we've got to spend how much? Let's just knock it down and rebuild. But could we even, on the piece of property, and Jane, I think you started getting to this, like, could we do, kind of like what we're talking about for SUG, like, we're gonna, we've got enough, but we've got enough space at SUG where we can do the temporary campus while the new campus is built. Is, is that a possibility with the amount of acreage we have at, at Witt?
I don't think so. You'd be, it, it was already a tight site, which is why we procured the additional acreage. The total acreage is, I don't know if I brought it with me. Yeah, it's close to twenty and that's what we have at Har- Barbara Harvey Elementary is twenty acres. So if you look at that footprint of that Barbara Harvey and try to put it on the backside of this site, we would have to relocate the playgrounds that we moved from the side of the cafeteria. But we could certainly study that. But keep, I, I want to caution too, we, we are putting these budgets together, so SUG, now I'm tasked with, we're gonna do forty-five million dollars at SUG because that's what we spent for Mona Jane. And in reality, we had a clean site that was ready to go, it has a shared bus loop and for Mona Jane, but for SUG, we're gonna have to relocate portables, relocate the chiller, do asbestos abatement on the building, tear down the building and do site restoration on an active school campus. So it, it's different and we're gonna have to probably look at revising the scope to meet that forty-five million dollar budget. And I always say that we can design to program or we can design to budget. You tell us it has to be forty-five million dollars, we'll give you everything you can give for forty-five million dollars. If you want us to design to the program and make this campus whole, much like we did at the other sister campuses to this, then that's what we'll, that's what we'll do. And I don't want it to feel like it's a lie. We have been trying to balance this budget for six months now.
Uh, Board Member, uh, Golden.
I'm sorry.
And then Board Member Hope, I, you hadn't spoken.
That's fine.
And then we go Board Member Hope.
We are growing. The questions we are asking today, we probably wouldn't have even known to ask a year ago. But now we're asking. And we're asking not because we're trying to be accusatory, but because we're trying to be informed so that we can make the best decision for everybody. So let's, let's get that off the table. We're not in a hurry, we're not upset, we're not angry. We just want to be informed.
That's why we're here.
Well, I hear what you say, but I also heard what you said to my colleague when she made her comments. And what I'm concerned with is, I say again, we are growing. I'd like to think that everybody is growing and that we are open to new ideas. That we're not set so much in our ways that we can't take the little loss now instead of the bigger loss. And that's what I think this is all about. If you're gonna spend twenty-one million dollars to renovate an old campus, how much more efficient and effective and protective would it be to consider today, now, a new school? Now, your answer to that is, that would be foolish because we've invested too much money. Or that's something that we can consider because it's not too late and it's better that we make these adjustments now. So my question to you is, given what you've heard, have we moved too far along with this process to not be able to stop now and do a better job than if we just keep going like we're going?
No, I don't think it's too late. We have done the site work and we would have done the site work regardless of what else we did. Before we go any further, I would like to get maybe Mr. Hopes's help with DOE and saying that we can tear something down that doesn't meet their current criteria. If they say that, then I think it's worth pursuing. But then it maybe is a bigger conversation for you all to have and figure out how we could minimize the footprint of this while we build something else.
And then just to follow up, as Mr. Kennedy likes to say.
And then, just to follow up, as Mr. Kennedy likes to say, we must always be conscious of the fact that we serve an ever-changing financial climate. We just went to the people who trusted us with money is to do better things operationally for the district. We went to them before that to get things, to get the money that we need to do, to do things from a capital standpoint. We're going to be going back in a couple of years. So it's never static, it's never just in one place at one time. And so I just, I want us to, this is a moving, someone used an example one time, trying to build an airplane while you're flying it. I can't remember where that came from, but that just comes to my mind right now. We're building this airplane as we're flying it. So I know that can be a little daunting, but I think we're up to it. That's all we're trying to do, trying to make sure that we're doing the best thing for the best use of the best money. Can we agree on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I still, so you've answered my question, it's not too late for us to turn around now.
Good. Board member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to address a point that Mr. Kennedy made and Reverend Golden also, and I wish I could claim this was my idea, but it wasn't my idea, it was someone who does work for the district, builds schools for us and things like that. And it wasn't about this project, but it's appropriate for this project. And what I was told is we could have substantial savings in our construction projects if we could just move the kids out and they could get in there and do the whole thing. Okay? And this individual reminded me that we have an elementary school campus that is really a beautiful campus, it had a lot of renovations done to it, and that we could save substantial money and time if we could get the kids off of the campus, put them temporarily at Wakefield, Wakeland, and then they could go in and they can do all the work, whether it's renovation or replacing a facility. And I know that's a lot to throw out there, but it was a really good idea. And so that individual suggested, you know, find out what it would cost, because we really haven't vacated Wakeland. I mean, we're still using it. You know, what would the cost to bring it up, to be able to move an elementary school group of kids in there for just one year while they went in in a summer, in a school year, in a summer, and finished all the work instead of staging it and things like that? And so I think there is a way, and well, I know we can look at it, and look at what we need to do so that we can do it as most, you know, in the most efficient but also effective way and deliver the most value for the money. And, you know, I would say two years ago, we may have thought of renovating something like this, and we did. We've had a number of elementary schools that are similar design, and we renovated them. But now that we've been able to walk through a twenty-twenty version of an elementary school where these children don't have to go out in the rain and the cold to go to the cafeteria, or go to this building, or go to the library, it's all right there. And so I think we have to think strategically, and we know more than we knew a few years ago. And it really hit me when I went back to Panama City a few weeks ago for one of the high school unions, and Bay High, where I went to school, I graduated in seventy-nine, so it was, you know, forty years ago. And I looked at the front of the school, and they've done all this construction in the back, and they still have these old sixty-year-old classrooms where every door opens up to the outside. And then when I saw this, and I'm just putting all these conversations together, it just made a lot of sense. If we have an opportunity to really elevate this fiscal plant for this community who has been anxious for us to do the work that we said we were going to do, because I think this was originally part of the half percent sales tax.
Yes, sir.
But I think we have an opportunity to do what we do in healthcare, and that is we pause, we just stop everything and we think before we make that incision or whatever. And I think now's a good time to just pause, think a little bit outside of the box, and think about what's going to be best for these children ten years from now. Because Barbara Harvey, that building's going to be there for a long time. And so I think we have some flexibility that we may not have had in the past, I think we have some experience that we've gained, and these numbers are just sort of staggering when you talk about renovating an old design. We could put new fixtures in the bathroom, but when the day is done, these kids, their time and motion is going to be the same as it was twenty years ago. They're going to leave a building to go to another building, and we're going to need eyes and ears on them, and we're going to have to fence the whole friggin' campus, and we're going to have to have additional door locks and security. And I just, I think we need to pause, we need to think outside of the box, get creative, talk with people, and then give us the choices so that we can weigh them. But I think this is a, members, I think this is a good project to say, hold off, let's take what we've learned and let's look at all the options before we spend twenty-three million dollars.
Okay. I'm going to kind of throw it around the table here about pushing the pause button. It was suggested that, you know, board member Hopes, you know, and, you know, Jane, go to Tallahassee to see if we can look further into, you know, having, you know, taking the designs of Harvey. And it's kind of nice to have a great design already in the box, so to speak, and, you know, put that on the WIT property and, you know, go from there. I don't know how much time would be involved, but it would seem like that could be accomplished within a couple of weeks. You know, I'm just throwing that out to my fellow board members, you know, how you feel about hitting the pause button as suggested by board member Hopes, or going forward with, you know, this site plan, which doesn't have a unanimous support, let's put it that way. Okay. Mr. Kennedy, how do you feel about that?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I'm totally supportive, I mean, you know, the argument makes a lot of sense. But Jane, of the twenty, let's just start, we'll go with the lower number, the twenty point, twenty point four. That entire twenty point four has already been approved by the board, but not, my questions are, how much has been approved and how much has been expended on the project so far?
I can't tell you how much is expended.
Even generally?
Across multiple fiscal years.
True, true.
But I can tell you, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of...
Neighborhood's fine, yeah.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of four million dollars.
Has been expended.
Between design and construction, because we did the clearing of the site, and then we started the three point six million dollar amendment, and we haven't spent all of that yet, so.
Okay, okay, that helps.
We're around four million is what we spent.
I was just curious. No, I think generally, I think it's a, oh, and one more. Are there any improvements, kind of, and I forget what they're called in our capital plan, but immediate improvements that need to be done for student safety and security?
I think that there probably are.
And I know we don't want to talk about them publicly.
I wouldn't venture to guess at the moment now. The roof is in terrible condition. Roof leaks daily, weekly. I mean, right now, we're not in the rainy season, but, you know, it's still raining, and when we are in the rainy season, it's coming in in buckets. I mean, there was a public records request for the work orders on the roof just in the last two or three years, and it's very lengthy. So, I mean, the roof is definitely something that has been in the scope from the beginning. Where we cut that off and say, you know, we'll do the two worst buildings if we're considering a complete replacement, I mean, it doesn't have a secure or single point of entry, so I think that might be something that we could do something temporary for. And then probably some perimeter fencing, but I mean, you know, like we're doing on some of our other campuses, but that might require more architectural thought than just me up here looking at us.
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of putting you on the spot for questions you didn't have. But no, it just gives me a fuller picture. Like I said, I think it's generally a good idea, the logistical nightmare of finding somewhere for those kids to go for, you know, fifteen months, that would be quite a challenge. Maybe we build another elementary school farther east, send them there, and then we rebuild WIT. As long as we're brainstorming, you know, what the heck. But it is helpful, I appreciate that, Jane, thank you. But no, I think generally, it's, if you want a yes or no on the pause button, I guess I'm more of a yes than a no.
Vice Chair Messenger.
I want to apologize if I came across as attacking you, that's not my goal. I am very frustrated, and it's not necessarily even at this situation, but at multiple situations that I've seen this board run into in the last few years where we put in some money, then we're over a barrel, and then all of a sudden, it's a deluge and more is added. And this happened multiple times, and that's not even just construction. And that is, that has to stop at some point, and that's really my point, and that's, once again, not aimed at you, it's not even aimed at construction. It is aimed at the process and what is happening so that this doesn't continue to happen to us, and so that you can plan better and the district can plan better on multitude of projects where that continues to happen, where we feel like, oh, we've already put in three million dollars, so now what? Or, oh, we've already put in whatever, now we have to. So that's really where my frustration comes from. My other concern is, if we hit the pause button, I know the roof is a massive problem, and that, if we hit a pause button, it needs to be a very short pause, and if it's not feasible, then to me, I'm all in, because if we're not all in, then we're doing it in five years, and I don't really think that's fair to the school. So what I'd want to know is if we have to pick one of these and we can't replace, first of all, I'd love to know how we'd actually make that work, because I can't imagine busing kids all the way to Wakeland for an entire year, nor can I imagine the community being okay with that. But let's say that that was feasible to find a way to build it on the campus. If that's not, then to me, being all in makes a lot more sense for the school, makes a lot more sense just in general, because I think things are going to just get more expensive over time, and I just don't think that's the right thing to do. But I would like to know, if that does happen, and we do decide that we can't do that and we have to do this, I'd like to know where that money's going to come from. I'd like to know what things are not going to happen in our next three to five years when this is being, the money is being taken out. I'd like to know where, what's going to happen, how's that going to alter our capital plan? I'd like to know that, if, when we are done hitting the pause button.
If we add, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I'm not articulating myself, I suppose. Let's say the pause button and new school is not feasible.
Okay.
And we have to renovate all the buildings because the state says that that's the way we must go. Or we find that it's more financially feasible once you compare the two, because it doesn't sound like you've had the opportunity to do that. I'd like to know where out of the capital plan that money would, the additional money would come from? Because right now, as part of our capital plan, we've planned the twenty point four million dollars. I'd like to know what things would be cut or altered, because I know in a few years, we're going to be real slim on capital dollars, and I'd like to know where that would come from. I don't have to know that now, I just have to know that whenever things are being decided, I'd like to know where that's going to come from.
So let me recap to make sure that I understand. If we go with the replacement and what that is, what the delta would be, and where that would come from in the capital plan, if that doesn't work or is not feasible, the all-in plan, where that two point six million dollars would come from in the capital plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I was going to, you know, just put on the table for thought how, if everybody agreed that we pushed the pause button for three weeks, and that would be sufficient time for Jane and board member Hopes, you know, to, you know, see if what he was suggesting is, can go forward at all. I think that's where we're at. And then to get back and, you know, get some report or, you know, planning for us to discuss this, you know, three weeks from today, because we do want to move this along, but we want to see if we can get out of the gate first before we go on. Is that kind of the consensus? Okay, I'm getting some nods, yes. And, okay, if that's it, we're going to adjourn the meeting.
I'd like to ask one more.
Okay, we have one more question coming from.
With respect to the money that we've already spent, because we don't want to be accused of flip-flopping here, we're trying to be careful with the people's money, how much of that that has already been spent is available or is duplicated, no matter what we do, whether we come with a new plan or a new...
We can do that analysis.
Okay.
And we can get you more accurate numbers, too.
You can come back with that. Okay, board member Kennedy.
One more quick one, just a detailed question, Jane, as long as you're here. The roof, would that be the roof of just the B one and B five, or is that all roofs on campus?
No, it included all roofs in all options, because that, to me, that's a non-negotiable. You got to do all the roofs.
Oh, no, I mean, in the context of, when I asked you, like, what's critical on campus now, and the roof obviously was, it sounds like the roof's priority number one.
In one of these, you can actually see an aerial photo. So if you look at the aerial photo on page three...
Go with yours, yeah.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
So I would say, if I had to guess, and I would ask Mr. Marshall to confirm this, the worst is probably buildings, well, all of them. I mean, if you look at B, at building three and building five, they've had pretty significant patching over the years. You see how it looks like a patchwork quilt?
Mm-hmm.
And then B two looks that way. I think B one is the same way, but maybe doesn't look as much like that, because it's a little more sloped and has that clear story above it, in that we call them the dog houses on top of the roof there. So probably two, three, four, and five.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, board member Kennedy. And with that, we're going to adjourn the workshop, and about three weeks from today, today we'll come back to this topic, right? We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you all. Very productive workshop.
They are going to...
Yeah, almost an hour.
What are we going to do for ourselves in that extra time?
Yeah, I'm going to sleep. I'm going to sleep one minute, ten minutes, seven minutes. One minute, I ain't sleeping, so I'm just...
Is it maturity period?
No, I was just mad about this.
They don't allow them to comment there, right? I'm surprised they did that. All right, let me hear it, Mr. Marshall, things were crazy now.